Welcome to the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Regular Meeting, March the 25th, 2014. We're running a little late. We had a public workshop regarding, with the Fire District Representatives regarding Ordinance 28, Appendix L., which has to do with state requirements and district requirements for fire protection. So that's why we're running a little late. Roll call?
Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Strobel?
Present. Okay. Councilmember Blatz, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have some presentations tonight. We have a proclamation for Development Disabilities Month, and Mayor Protem Smith is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored to read this. This is on our Developmental Disabilities Month, whereas developmental disability is a condition which today affects more than seven million American children, adults, and their families. And whereas every person, regardless of ability, has valuable strengths, infinite capacity to learn, and the potential to make important contributions to their local communities, and whereas celebrating the abilities and contributions of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities can only serve to enrich our community and enhance our diversity, and whereas more than 700 individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities receive educational, employment, and independent living services from the Ark of Ventura County, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County is celebrating 60 years of service to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families since 1954, whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is an appropriate time to commemorate the progress in improving the lives of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and also identifying the improvements that remain in achieving full inclusion. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Carlin Strobel, Mayor of the City of Ojai, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and urge our citizens to give full support to empowering people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to live productive lives and achieve their fullest potential.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to receive the proclamation?
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I'm honored to...
Let me give you this, and then you can say a few words. This is the proclamation we just read.
I'm honored to accept this award, and Ark has been my home for a long time, but I've had many struggles, but, you know, I fall down and I get up, and I'm stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Adam Mayor? Adam Mayor? If you could just introduce yourselves?
Sure. I'm Patty Scholz. I'm the CEO of the Ark of Ventura County. Mia McCormick is a participant at our Ojai Enrichment Center. Amber Lundin is the manager of that program, and Roger Embry is our board member representing Ojai. So thank you very much on behalf of the Ark. We are having a celebration in August for our 60th anniversary, and you'll all receive an invitation. We hope you'll join us.
Thank you very much.
I hope you guys can join us, and we're a barrel full of monkeys of fun.
And I overlooked one of our presentations. Is Troy Becker here this evening?
No, actually, that was pulled from the agenda.
Okay. All right. Next on our presentations is the Presentation Community Donation Drop-Off Rotary Park. Stephanie Midgett? Is she someone? No, you're not Stephanie.
Thank you for recognizing that. No, Stephanie is unavailable to attend tonight, so you're stuck with me. I'm Les Gardner, a member of the Rotary Club of Ojai West. And we, along with the CERT volunteers in the valley, are having a, hopefully, successful donation drop-off of equipment that is listed on, I think the list is everywhere. Stephanie has it. If it's not on every bathroom wall in Ojai, I don't know why not. But anyway, it's April the 5th at Rotary Park, from 10:00 to 2:00. And hopefully, people will drop off donations of some of the equipment that's on the list. Or we accept checks. And for that, and this is really a big deal, we're giving a hot dog to everyone in the car. If there's six people in the car and they donate a shovel, they get six hot dogs. We're actually going to call them Rotary Dogs, which are different than venus schnitzel, but in the same ballpark. But I don't know if you are aware of what CERT and Rotary has done as far as disaster preparedness is concerned, but for the last seven years, our club has been very instrumental in helping train people through CERT to be prepared for emergencies. And we have a DVD that's titled People Like You, and it's shown every Sunday, I believe, at 8:00 a.m. It's about an hour presentation, and it really helps prepare you for a disaster. Gives you training, good ideas to what to have at home for an emergency. It's a very helpful program. And I think there's a gentleman here tonight from CERT.
Les, while he's coming up, when you say it's shown every Saturday at 8:00?
Every Sunday morning at 8:00 a.m.
On Channel 10?
On Channel 10. I believe that's the access channel.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. I brought a prop tonight. Mayor Strobel, Mayor Protem Smith, council members and staff, Paul Garth, representing tonight Ojai Valley CERT. Rotary West has been a huge champion of the CERT program. We have greatly benefited, as Les Gardner was mentioning, the CERT DVD, which is a really good review for people who have done the CERT program. And it also has a 15-minute or an 18-minute teaser, which is really good for home presentations where we're marketing, you know, why you should spend 21 hours, you know, six evenings and a Saturday, you know, going through the CERT program. This year, the third Wednesday of September, is our seventh, I think it's the seventh year we've done the Ojai Valley OK Drill. And it is now a permanent sign because it's laminated, and that funding comes from Rotary Ojai West. So the prop I have tonight, this is a piece of four-by-four, I think 17 inches dimension. And I bring it because this is really what it's about. CERT is very physical. It is very, it is kind of labor. It's kind of getting your hands in the muck and kind of digging people out possibly. This is not, you know, sometimes fun stuff. And a four-by-four cut in half is now a two-by-four, and cut 45 degrees is now a wedge. These are the three items, cribbing and lifting, which is one of the components of the CERT program, along with medical triage, communications, incident command, fire suppression. You've heard me mention this before. With cribbing and lifting, I can, with using the principle of mechanical advantage, a first-class lever, push down 50 pounds and push up 1,000 pounds. Pushing down 50 pounds is not really that much pressure to gain mechanical advantage of 1,000 pounds. That can mean the difference where lifting a car up, or, you know, if somebody is trapped underneath concrete, something. We've proven this time and time again as CERT refreshers. People have this wood. We're getting, we have a good deal from Ojai lumber. When they don't need the wood, we just get their wood, and we try and, you know, coat it so that people don't, you know, sometimes with the CERT drills, the lumber can get kind of mixed up a little bit. What we're really needing for the donations, and Stephanie Midgett has done a great job of compiling, is all of the other things, like the crates for the wood, the cribbing bar, which is like a digging pole from, let's say, Ace Hardware. That's where the real cost is, $30 to $40. Our goal with having nine neighborhoods, going from Kiseita Springs up to Miramonte, up to Miners Oaks, and Oakview, and Arbolada, Foothill, West City, Ojai, East City, Ojai, Opera, Ojai, you know, the nine neighborhoods, is with the principle of incident command system, having each neighborhood having five sub-neighourhoods, what I call an NERT, a Neighborhood Emergency Response Team, exactly how we do the OK Drill. We pull off every year in one hour, counting OK signs across the entire valley, using principles of incident command, breaking down the nine neighborhoods into groups, into five groups, which have five rendezvous points. Our objective is to expand the cribbing and lifting program. That means that if something happens anywhere, I have five locations per neighborhood, which has a whole stack of wood, a bunch of cribbing bars, a bunch of, you know, boxes to crate things around, so that we have a very short distance to go to a known location. This could also be possibly a garden shed. If somebody has a Rubbermaid garden shed, then we can put a whole bunch of stuff, maybe fire extinguishers, and hard hats, and gloves, and vests, and so forth. So we actually have 45, nine times five, 45 locations throughout the valley. That's a pretty big project. I know it's adventurous, but it is doable, and it is something to work towards. So this is really what this event is on Saturday, April 5th, is creating awareness that sometimes you have these basic items at home, and putting it to really good use. So I hope that added something, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, good. You have the directions here. Good evening, Mayor Strobel, council and city staff. I'm Scott Eiker. I'm the CEO of the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also the Secretary Treasurer of the Ojai Visitors Bureau. With me tonight is the Ojai Visitors Bureau Marketing Manager, Veronica Cole over here. We're the third presentation tonight, I know, so I'm going to move through this short presentation quickly so you can get to the meat of your agenda. The Ojai Visitors Bureau is now a committee of the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber and its members worked with the City of Ojai to institute a three-year program that was fully funded by the city at the rate of approximately $160,000 a year. The city, U, has graciously continued to support it at the rate of $50,000 for each of the last two years. And at the end of 2011, the Chamber and the city agreed to work together to form the Ojai Tourism Improvement District as a means to sustainable funding. The OTID is a 1% assessment on every room sold in the city limits, and every hotel room sold in the city limits in Ojai, and some that are sold in the unincorporated area. The OTID lives in five-year increments and will finish its first phase in November of 2017. This assessment was projected to produce approximately $200,000 a year. Our first full calendar year produced an increase in TOT of 14% over the calendar year of 2012, and generating a little over $250,000 for the OVB. The OVB is an outbound destination marketing committee whose primary concern is to market Ojai as a destination with the aim of increasing midweek overnight stays. We do this by bringing travel riders to town and giving them the Ojai experience, by letting them see the natural beauty and letting them experience the many attractions of this unique valley. We have hired a public relations firm and an internet marketing firm to assist us in our endeavor. Our PR firm, Wagstaff Worldwide International, helps to introduce us to travel journalists and produce themes for programs and suggest strategic partnerships. The OVB and Wagstaff market and promote the unique destination of Ojai, and essentially act as the voice of Ojai. We work closely with local tourism partners to create inspirational, only-in-Ojai itineraries for our visiting journalists, and our collective voice is being heard on the local, regional, national, and even international levels. The internet marketing firm is working on our website to improve its efficiency through improved design and SEO function. This firm, Saber Hospitality Solutions, is the best in its field at improving internet functionality of hotel and tourism-based websites. We typically organize two to three themed group press trips per year, and we also organize individual press trips throughout the year. We immerse the riders in the Ojai culture during the 48 hours they are here, and give them a truly authentic experience. The riders also receive welcome bags with a sampling of Ojai products so that they take a piece of Ojai home with them. Since January of 2013, we have hosted numerous individual press trips as well as several group trips, including a culinary-focused press trip, an art-themed press trip, and we partnered with the spokesman for the Ford C-Max, Danny Seo. Each of the media hits that you see here on these slides is a result of our proactive pitching of these riders. We have purchased some specific site-specific photographs to freshen up the photo gallery on our website, and we have entered into an agreement with Michael McFadden for over two dozen iconic images of Ojai to use on the website and supply to our journalists. This past January, our OVB marketing manager Veronica and our Wagstaff account supervisor Heather Dillon braved the polar vortex to visit New York City and have a face-to-face meeting with A-list editors and writers for the top travel publications, some of who are represented on this slide. The premise of the trip was to promote April as our Pixie Month and Ojai as a destination. Veronica and Heather met each editor or writer armed with a tablet-based PowerPoint presentation and a bag of Ojai goodies. Every one of them they met expressed a genuine interest in Ojai and wanted to learn more about the town, and especially pixie season. Next week, we will host a pixie-themed press trip, and when the riders arrive, they will see, let's see if this works. Does that work? Okay, good. They will see 27 Pixie Month banners hanging in the arcade. They'll see merchants with specific pixie displays. They will eat more than a few pixie-based meals, and there will be orchard tours and Jeep tours and a special dinner at Ojai Pixie Grower Jim Churchill's barn. All this and more in two and a half days. Then this fall, we will have our second fall art-themed press trip. Details are still in the formulation stage, but we hope to include a tour of the art galleries in town, a Cloud Climbers Jeep Tour that includes the Larry Carn Studio and the Beatrice Wood Center for the Arts. And we are already receiving inquiries about this tour. So in a nutshell, that is who we are, what we do, and how we do what we do. I'm here, and so is Veronica. If you have any questions, we're happy to entertain them. And let me just show everyone, this is the banner that will be hanging in the arcade. We'll have 27 of them hanging throughout the arcade. So they'll be up for the first two weeks of April, and then, of course, the 114th Annual Ojai Tennis Tournament will put their banners up. You have any questions, there?
Any councilmember have questions?
No questions, but thank you, Scott.
Got an awesome job.
All right. We appreciate your funding. We utilize it, and we're doing our best to promote this town.
Okay. The next on our agenda is, the time is set aside for public communications, and before we, before we open it up for public communications, I want to remind everyone that if you wish to address the council, please turn in a speaker's card to Rhonda. Limit your comments to three minutes. And before we start comments, I wanted to, and I'll be very brief with this, I wanted to let the public know that an alternate site has been proposed for the wireless site application to be withdrawn. AT&amp;T has withdrawn their application for a wireless tower at the Lutheran Church property. And the other thing I want to mention is, we will be having interviews for commission vacancies. March the 28th, we'll be interviewing for the Planning Commission and for the Arts Commission. And that panel will be myself and Councilmember Blatz. On Monday, the 31st, we'll be interviewing for Historic Preservation Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission. And that panel will be Councilmember Savaro, and my, Savaro Lara, and myself. And that's all the announcements I have. Okay. And I'm just going to take these in however order they ended up. Michael Deering, I'm assuming it's for public communications. There wasn't a number. Mr. Deering, if you'd like to go ahead.
Hi. My name is Mike Deering, and I'm going to be talking about our problem in the parks and the arcade area with the transient population. Loose dogs. We are now having dogs attacking other dogs, dogs biting people. Now, today, this morning, I heard we had a dogfight staged behind the arts center. Now, merchants are, I understand, are also having these people acting up in front of the, behind their business, you know, this public drunkenness, and all these people, or most of them are addicts. Okay, we, there's no secret about that. It's pretty obvious. And when they're sober, they're perfectly nice to people. When they're not, anyhow, so, some people have called the police, and we get a, we don't handle dog problems. Call animal control. With the $3 million budget, I have a little bit of a lot problem with that. Several months ago, I spoke with one of the deputies, and I was very pleased with the actions he was taking. I was actually seeing him acting on these things, speaking with the people involved, and occasionally, they're just running these people around, you know, just moving from one place to the other, and that's, I understand, that's the best that can be done. The problem is, I don't see a consistent effort. And that's what we really need to have happening, and I think this problem will start gradually going away if that was to happen. Obviously, the captain is going to know what, how to solve that, but just to let other people aware, I mean, if the deputy would just get out of his car a couple times a day, 15, 20 minutes, walk the trouble areas and contact these people, and just let them know we're there, fill out that field card, and run for warrants. I'd be almost willing to bet my fair amount of money that a lot of these people got warrants that need to go to jail for that. Instead of when a person is being picked up for their public intoxication, which is very frequent, the dogs are being left with somebody else in that party. The dogs need to be impounded. I mean, this is now out of control. And, I mean, this applies to everybody. We can unleash dogs, cite everybody, period. And failure to pick up the dog mess, the same. It's gotten, you know, really ugly and messy, so, anyhow, 11 seconds, and I'll wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deering. William Wirek?
Bill Wirek is speaking as an individual citizen. Curiosity prompts my question. Don't necessarily expect an answer, but I was curious as to when we might expect the resolutions associated with the proposal to have an election, directly elected mayor under general law city, when to expect maybe for those to be proposed on the agenda, available for city council review, and of course, in public review as well, public comment. Just kind of curious about the timing that we might be looking at for that.
I'll respond to that. The, I felt that our agenda right now for the rest of this month was very busy, was very congested with the cell tower and this type of thing, so I asked that it be put off until the first meeting in April. I think that's April 11th.
So you don't have a full council on the first meeting in April, and I'd suggest that you schedule it at a time when you do have a full council. I think tentatively, we had it on the May 13th meeting, but the council could change that. The deadline is June 30th to have the thing finalized.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lobel. I live on 1126 Paso de Robles. I'm here to say thank you. I think there are some other people behind me who will do the same thing. Obviously, the cell tower issue was front and center for a lot of us. Thank you for resolving it, or at least getting them to withdraw it, and hopefully, that will be a permanent resolution. I would like to specifically thank the new planning director, Ms. Wald, who managed to come in in the middle of a rather heated period of time and write a new staff report, and I very much appreciate it. And thank you very much, and hopefully...
Etta Haddon?
Good evening. My name is Etta Haddon, and my address is 421 Los Alamos Drive. I live next door to the formerly proposed site for the AT&amp;T cell tower, and I too want to thank you for helping to right this ship that was obviously sinking. But I'd also like to just take one moment to thank all those folks in this community, as well as our stronghold of neighbors who helped to get the message across, and our voices were heard, and I thank you for that. And I would also just ask and encourage that you consider this is not a finished problem, and that we look at our ordinance as it exists, and create an ordinance that will be more tightly drafted so that when these problems come up in the future, we'll have something stronger to rely upon. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And we are continuing to review our ordinance on the cell towers for the City of Ojai.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Strobel and councilmembers, for this opportunity to express a slightly different opinion. So while I am as grateful as anyone else that the tower is not going to go up in that particular location, I do want to read from the email that I received today. It says, "The new alternative site is expected to be at least 700 feet north of Grand Avenue," which of course puts it outside the city limits. So there seems to be an idea that somehow city limits solves the problem. But I don't think bees, and I don't think electromagnetism, know about city limits. And a cellphone tower that has not ever been shown to be needed, we can say no to that. And then I will read the other part of what I received. It says here that "The City Council of Ojai believes that this site is appropriate and a supportable way for AT&amp;T to enhance its services in the City of Ojai and the County of Ventura." I would disagree with you. I don't think any site is appropriate. It is a health risk. There are orchards there. Electromagnetic frequency has been shown to have a link to colony collapse disorder. So if you don't talk about health, let's talk about economy, because our oranges are important, our bees are important. And then, of course, there are the residents who live on that side of Grand Avenue. So I am asking city council to reconsider the recommendation of staff, that you work with AT&amp;T and support this location. I would say, no, this is the time to show some grit, and to say, we are not, I know you can't do anything, it's outside city limits, but by throwing your support there, you are doing something. And I'm asking you to take away your support for a cellphone tower anywhere, anywhere in the Ojai Valley. Thank you.
Mayor Strobel, councilman...
Mayor Strobel, council members, staff. I want to express on my own behalf, on behalf of my wife, Donna, on behalf of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, some of whom spoke to you, some of whom wrote to you, many, many hundreds of whom signed petitions and are not here tonight, for the leadership that you showed in dealing with the cell tower issue, for recognizing that the process that led to that December 27th notice was deeply, deeply flawed, for listening to all of us as we came here and expressed our concerns, some with anger, not because we were angry at you, but because we found ourselves in a very difficult position, some with tears, all of us deeply concerned about the prospect of living with a cell tower in our front or backyard, for understanding that this wasn't a backyard, front yard issue, it was an issue that affected the entire community, and the values that are so important to Ojai and make it a place that we all love and care so deeply about, for enhancing the staff, already doing a good job, but even a better job with the addition of Kathy Wold, who stepped into a mess and did a terrific job of navigating a very complicated situation, and writing a recommendation that was comprehensive, fair, and even-handed, and it just so happened it came out the way so many of us wanted it to. And last but not least, for recognizing that you needed professional help, and retaining Jonathan Kramer to guide you through a very complicated statutory, federal, state, and local morass, and court decisions that go every which way, and helping to provide some clarity to the legal landscape in which you are operating. I share the sentiments that were expressed about the importance, and I was delighted to hear that you have asked Mr. Kramer to continue to advise you on redoing, enhancing our ordinance, to take account of all that's happened since it was first enacted. There's a new Communications Act amendment. Court decisions are being handed down with some regularity. And last but not least, I would encourage you to recognize the need for additional transparency through some sort of a website, and there's been discussion about it, other cities have adopted it, so that we know on a real-time basis what's happening, and you know on a real-time basis what's happening, and we don't find ourselves getting ambushed again because we don't know what's happening in our own community. Thank you all again very much.
I would like Mr. Clark to address the comment about transparency and letting people know what's going on in the community, so they have a better idea.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Recently, the council had a goal-setting process, and one of the goals that you assigned to us was looking at the website and also looking at social media. And so, both of those are in progress, and will be issues that will be discussed during the budget time in May and June.
Next speaker, Raymond Sims.
Good evening, Dr. Raymond Sims. My address, 1202 San Ramon Way. I just would also like to echo Ted's comments, to thank all of you for the efforts that were made, and especially Kathleen Wold in the AT&amp;T cell tower application. Unfortunately, they're not going to go away that easily, and they are, of course, looking for an alternative site out in the east end of the valley. However, they withdrew their application, they did not get denied, and it is possible for them to return and resubmit an application for even the same place if they meet the criteria that are listed. Therefore, I'm asking that, again, the ordinance needs to be revised, and in a very quick fashion, not slipshod, but appropriately timed. And I would suggest that the height limit for any cell tower propositions would be the equal of the county, which is 40 feet. And I hope that this is something we can expedite, it's very, very important for the future of us. I think Scott Iker's presentation, and his pictures of Ojai, and why people come to Ojai, has to be kept in mind for everybody. This is a very unique place, and we need to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hold the applause. We got started a little late this evening, and we have mini speaker cards. Michael Francis Smith? Michael Shanahan? Oh, are you, Mr. Smith?
My name is Michael Francis Smith, and I live on Golden West. And I too want to thank you for hearing us. Want to thank you for hiring extra help, and want to encourage you to please follow through and write a reasonable policy for cell towers and for any future technology. I think that Mr. Iker and his presentation tonight was very well timed, because I observed that our city has a lot of unique qualities, and I hope that we can find a way to write reasonable policy to live up to them. What has happened around this issue is that many neighbors have gotten together, we formulated an organization called Ojai Neighbors Engaged, and we intend to continue to advocate for good government, and to hold folks accountable for preserving the qualities of Ojai. I want to thank you all personally very much, and especially Kathleen Wold, for all of your help. Thank you.
Hold the applause, please.
Good evening, Mayor Strobel, council, staff. My name is Michael Shanahan, I'm at 1120 Golden West Avenue. I came before you before, I was a little frustrated, I was a little annoyed, and I come before you now, a lot more chastened and grateful. This is actually one of the reasons that I like Ojai, and that I moved here, and that I appreciate the city, is that it's an accessible city, and that people do listen. Sometimes you have to raise your voice a little bit, but, you know, that's normal. I want to thank staff for their extraordinary work. I know when you're, I work in public sector, and I've been on that side of the table, and I know when people are challenging you and yelling, that it's kind of hard to separate the emotion from the fact and deal with the substance. And I think you've done an extraordinary job, especially given the time constraints. I think, however, as been mentioned, the job isn't done, and the ordinance is very important, and the urgency with which we hope that you'll take it up is very important. But in that interim, I think there's one additional step that I hope that you will consider, and that is a moratorium on any future applications until such time as the ordinance is complete. I think it's very important, I think we've seen that the cell companies, AT&amp;T and all of them, are experts in this area, and they won't finish until they get what they're looking for. We think that the ordinance needs to be strong, it needs to reflect current technology, but we also need some protection in the meantime. And so, I would hope that you would consider that and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorann Sims, San Ramon Way. Again, thank you very much, appreciate all that all of you have done, especially your work. But I too am very concerned about what lies in the near future for us, because AT&amp;T and these other companies, Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, you can name all of them, are all very anxious to come into our area, that little eighth of a mile area that they have pinpointed, and they are not going to stop until they get what they want. So, we need to move quickly and carefully to make sure that AT&amp;T doesn't come back to the church, which they certainly could do, because they withdrew, rather than waiting to get a denial, which they would have gotten. I could imagine that one of these other companies could come in tomorrow and apply for the same thing AT&amp;T did at that church site, and they could file an application. And since there isn't anything in place now to prevent any of this from happening, we can go through this one more time. And I know you all don't have the time or desire to do this, because you have a lot of other great things you need to do for our wonderful city. So, please, please get going on this, and be careful, because those big guys out there aren't done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I've heard, and I'm not exactly sure I'm 100% right, that there's consideration to take the Planning Commission from its current seven members and reduce it down to five, and to make the.
Mr. Bergman, that is an agendized item, and so, I would like for you to come back and speak when it comes up. It'll be coming, it's on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm going to put, and I believe it's item six. Bruce Canvasser.
Thank you, Bruce Canvasser, I live in the Golden West area. Again, I want to thank the council. You've heard enough about cell towers, and I agree with everything that Ted and everybody else has spoken to. I would less like you to know that, I mean, I think I personally, I don't want to exaggerate, but talked to hundreds of people, not just people in the neighborhood. And believe me, I didn't pull anybody's arm and say, "If you sign this petition, I'll give you $5." I had no problem in only a couple weeks, well, we all did, getting nine, 1,000 signatures, had it gone on, I think we would have kept it up. It's a big issue, and you're not the only city council that will have to approach this. But we are still concerned, and as I walk by that area, I still look at that, you know, that piece of property, and I say, and I have a little shudder. Anyways, again, thank you very much. Thank you.
And I have a question for you before you sit down. Do you, was the petition turned in to the city clerk?
I think it was given to the Planning Commission. There were other petitions too, there were also petitions online.
I just wanted to make sure we had it on record.
Yes, it's in the package, I think.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just have one comment if I could. I just want to express a sincere thanks to so many people in the community that became involved in this particular situation. It's always heartwarming when a community can come together with such vigor, and bring to the council an expression of their desires, and allow us to work towards gaining that end. And we just can't do it without the involvement of the public, so, thank you very much for doing that. And then, I also want to say, we can't let our guard down, as some of you have expressed. And I would like to just ask the city manager, how long do you think it's going to be, or perhaps, Mr. Fletcher, before we're going to have an ordinance that we can look at in terms of a modification or an update?
So, the current plan was to have a joint workshop of the Planning Commission and the city council at the first meeting in May, and so, in the meantime, we would consult with Mr. Kramer and develop some options for consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you to all of the public for your input.
And also, with that regard, I mean, thank you guys. I mean, you guys were the ones that did most of the work. Again, it's, we were just put in this position, but you guys did. I was very impressed how well you guys presented your case, and it just shows what a community this is, so, thank you.
Councilmember Clapp.
Yes, I would like to, if possible, have the city attorney address the question about a potential, a possible moratorium against cell tower installation, whether that's something that's possible or not.
I think the question, an outright ban on any further applications for a period of time would probably be problematic in terms of direct conflict with the federal law, that we can't ban them. On the other hand, the state law permits us to adopt what's called an interim development control ordinance, which means that you see, you can't, you can't file an application for a certain use while you're studying a change in zoning, but then have an alternative process they go through to show a hardship situation, something where they could get basically a waiver from that. So, it creates a very tight control over what gets submitted, if anything, during a moratorium period, and also, and we're obviously, this is a high priority, and also, the length of time is a big factor. You know, a one- or two-year ban moratorium would be a difficult thing to uphold, but again, our priority here is to, is to bring back revised ordinance over the next 60, 90 days, and so, I think we can, I think, and I've already been in touch with Mr. Kramer, we're going to work together on finding out what, you know, what we can do to create the greatest sense of security, that, you know, that what we just went through doesn't happen again over the short term. And then, we'll bring you, as close as we can, the, you know, state-of-the-art ordinance in terms of additional criteria and additional application requirements to ensure that we have what we really need to properly evaluate an application.
So, if I'm, to understand you, there's, it's two-pronged. Once, one, you're going to come before us with a potential, not moratorium, whatever you called it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the interim development control ordinance, if we can do that.
Okay, and as well as a draft of an ordinance, and that's.
Yeah, what we'll have, what we'll have for that workshop would be basically an outline of the range of existing, what I call, state-of-the-art standards that we can show you and get some policy direction. Honestly, I think, much of this is, we have a lot of, a lot of standards in our ordinance already, so it's really a matter of beefing up and bringing more up-to-date some of the terminology we use, address, better address locational standards.
I'm going to, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Blatz, and I want to remind ourselves that we're getting close to probably a Brown Act violation here, this is not an agendized item. We're getting into maybe a little more in-depth discussion than we should. Councilmember Blatz?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Mr. Fletcher, can we, can it come back before us prior to the workshop for this interim type of legislation or controls?
We, I'll have to let you know, I've got to talk with Mr. Kramer, we have to, we have to look at it and see what we can recommend to you.
Because just, my preference would be that that comes back before us prior to the workshop, when we're actually going to be discussing the ordinance.
Okay. And what, by then, you do, you've done, it'd be a two-step process, 45-day urgency ordinance, and then an extension if you do that, so we will put that on the number one priority.
Well, and I think it would be good to come back as an agendized item, so that we can discuss it a little more freely, and then we're really able to tonight. I wanted to thank the audience, first of all, for your participation, for taking your time to appear here many times, for giving us what for, when you felt we weren't serving your best interest. That's, that's what we need to do as good a job as we can. And thank you very much for recognizing our staff, especially Kathleen Wold, and, but remember that our city attorney, Mr. Fletcher, and our city manager, Mr. Clark, also worked on this, so, I thank all of our staff. Any other comments? Okay, next item on our agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Roll call. Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Next item is a public hearing, historic landmark property Mills Act agreement to, for historic landmark number 20, the Arbola House B, located at 715 El Toro Road. Mr. Clark?
Ms. Wald will make the presentation on this.
Good evening.
You raised your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell if somebody was talking behind me or not. Yeah, I'm Kevin Sun, they're both out of town, I'm just here if there's any questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. As you read into the record, this is for a Mills Act agreement between the city. As you read into the record, this is for a Mills Act agreement between the city and the Arbolata House B located at 715 El Toro Road. Staff, I'd like to point out that this Mills Act has come, had kind of a long journey to get to the point that it is before you tonight. This property was landmarked back in August 2012 and then modified in August 2013. Originally, it was landmarked as an entire property. The modification then just reduced this to the house itself being landmarked. But at that point in time, we weren't able to get a successful Mills Act agreement between the, the property owners and the city. And there were some issues that needed to be worked out with staff and, and clarifications with the property owner. In particular, there were some issues having to do with some elements of the property being modified, the front door, what was done with the building permit, what wasn't done with the building permit. And what staff did was, we went through and kind of did a whole history of the property and was able to get clarified what had been somewhat kind of like a miscommunication that kind of got a life of its own regarding the front door and modifications to the property and a wall that was built. And finally brought that back to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I believe that was in February of this year. And we pointed out to the Historic Commission the purpose of the Mills Act. If you find in your packet, I think it's on page 19, is this Preservation and Rehabilitation Timeline Plan, and that's a commitment that the property owner makes to, to repair or perform maintenance to these properties that are landmarked. We think that's really important to keeping the landmarked properties ongoing with maintenance, not letting them fall in the state of desk repair. And pointed that out to the commission, and I was, had to report that finally the commission voted to, to move this forward with a recommendation of approval. And, and I should add into the record that even though there was some controversy about why this wasn't land, or provided with the Mills Act right away, there's always been lots of compliments on what the, the property owner has done with the property, and everyone seemed to be really complimentary of that. So, with that, I'd just like to point out that in the packet, we have the Mills Act agreement, we have that rehabilitation plan. Staff would like you to consider adopting, if deemed appropriate, resolution approving historic landmark property Mills Act agreement between the city of Ojai and the property owners of historic landmark number 20, the Arbolata House known as B. And I can be open for any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions from council?
Just a comment.
Jim Smith?
Yes, I think there were issues concerning the door, the, the stone wall, I think, and a few other things. And I, I think from our meeting with the HPC, all those issues have been addressed. And so, that at this time, I have no problem with going ahead with staff recommendation.
Any other comments from the, or questions from staff? Anyone, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone from, in the audience who would like to address this issue? Mr. Lobel?
I find myself surprised-
This is your prior home.
Yeah, surprised to be here. And to be honest, I'm not as prepared as I would like to be. I must say that the history of the process is troubling. The reports that came out far before Ms. Wool got involved were simply false. The work that was done on the property was misrepresented as to who did it and when during the history, I believe. Councilmember Clapp, when you were mayor, we had a discussion about this, so it's been several years. I'm just concerned because this home was really not restored to what George Washington Smith designed. Those plans were available, they simply were ignored. And so, the council's being asked to call something a historic landmark, as well as give it certain tax benefits that benefit this or, or future owners, without really having it be what it was when it was created. And it had gone through, long before my family owned it, some changes that clearly were not consistent with the original design, were not in the same time period, were not, in some cases, attractive, and some people may have felt that some things done when my parents owned it weren't attractive either, or were not consistent with the, with the original George Washington Smith design. But now, this thing has become something that's totally different than what the plan, the original plans were, which happened to be in my family's possession. And I find it unfortunate that that then gets somebody a tax break. And I don't understand why that needs to occur. You can call it a historic landmark, but not give it a tax break, and I think that that probably would preserve it for the purposes of history or for recognition as to the importance of it with the other two homes within the Arbolata area that were part of the original George Washington Smith designs. And I just think that, that worrying about a door or a wall or something misses the point, that this was a integrated house created by, by Mr. Smith that has now been really dramatically changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue, this item? Okay, I'll bring him back to council.
I'm ready to make a motion. Have we closed the public hearing yet?
Okay, I'd, I'd like to adopt, if deemed appro-
Closed. Hmm? We just did. The public hearing is closed.
We finished, okay. So, I'd like to adopt, if deemed appropriate, a resolution approving a historic landmark property Mills Act agreement between the city of Ojai and the property owners of historic landmark number 20, the Arbolata House B.
Roll call, please. Blatts?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I, I, I know, I respect Mr. Lobel's opinion, and, and the reason why I voted yes for it is because I've, I've seen it just manifest, and, and there's a lot of, I don't know if misinformation or lack of records or whatever it is, but I hope that from now on, and I think Ms. Wool would, will do the job she demonstrated, the capacity to do really good work, is, is now clarifying that process for in the future when we do this, because it has been a long process, and the Historical Preservation Commission was really involved in conversation with this house in particular. And there's always seemed to be different stories coming up here and there, and there wasn't really any concrete history from way back to, to right now. So, I, I mean, there's been a lot of work, it's already been discussed, but I hope in the future we're able to, to clear up the process a little bit more, so, it's my only comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to explain my no vote. First of all, the vote for the historic preservation was 3-2 with one person absent. There's only six people on the commission right now, so that was a pretty tight vote, wasn't unanimous. And second of all, the Mills Act, in my mind, is to preserve the architecture, the original architectural integrity of a structure that's historic. And I would have to agree that to give, so I think the Mills Act needs to be very, I'll hand it out very, with a very serious, seriously, rather than just because something was built a long time ago. When it's been altered to the degree in which this structure has been altered, it no longer has the architectural integrity of the, of the original home. And George Washington Smith was quite the architect, and I think that if it was in that original, at least close to that original condition, it could be brought back to the original condition, I would've voted yes. But as it exists right now, I felt I needed to vote no.
Any other comments? Okay, the next item on our agenda is a service agreement with the Ojai Unified School District related to Channel 10 programming and PEG, public educational and government fees. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I'd like Mr. McCleary to make this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Steve McCleary, Deputy City Manager. The item before you tonight is an agreement that we have with the school district for the PEG, which is the public and educational government aspect of Channel 10. In February of 2011, the city and the school district entered into an agreement that provided funds to the school district so that they could purchase equipment to support development of programming for Channel 10. That agreement had an expiration through December of 2013, so that agreement has actually since expired. City staff was in contact with the school district staff prior to the expiration. We did have some discussions about bringing something forward to possibly extend the agreement or modify the agreement. However, due to a number of busy work schedules and other priorities, we were not able to get that done before December. However, there were a couple of things that changed, I would say, from when we first started having discussions with the school district. And what changed during that time, and really what has changed over the course of the agreement, is the, the needs of the city have changed in that time. As I understand it, this agreement came about to fill a potential gap in the development of programming for Channel 10. The city collects 1% of the gross revenues from the cable television franchise, and those are the PEG fees. That amount of money equates to about $18,000 to $20,000 a year. Several years ago, the city did not have a particular identified use for the funds at that time, so the idea was to enter into an agreement with the school district to provide funding to them so that they could do what was necessary to generate programming for the channel, and at the same time, it would be a win-win for the school and the students because they would be exposed to learning how to cablecast, videotape, and associated work that would be necessary to, to provide the programming for Channel 10. So, as I stated, the agreement did expire in December of 2013, and quite a bit has changed in terms of the city's needs since that time. We have had discussions with the school superintendent regarding whether the district would like to go forward with an agreement with the city, and the district still feels that there would be value to have an agreement with the city regarding PEG. However, the school district recognizes that the needs of the city has also changed in the year since this agreement was first formulated, and they are more than willing to consider an agreement that would, rather than simply automatically provide the 1% PEG funds to the school district to purchase equipment. The funds were, as they came in quarterly, they were then dispersed to the school district. But the, the district superintendent is more than amenable to entering into an agreement whereby the city and the school would be sharing the funds going forward. That may not be what the council desires to go forward, but we felt that that was at least a worthwhile consideration, and we want to bring that to the table tonight. What we talked about was some type of an agreement where the city and the school staff could get together once a year and discuss the needs of the district and the city, and try to come to some type of agreement there on how we would share the funds going forward. However, both parties agree that any type of an agreement that brought either party less than 20% of the funds probably wouldn't be worth entering into because you really can't do much with that. So, that's at least our recommendation, and if we do go forward with any type of a cost-sharing agreement, that it at least guarantees a minimum of 20% for either party. As I noted, since the agreement expired at the end of December, the city is on line to keep the PEG funds for now and continually absent any further agreement with the school district. So, we will be retaining the funds for the quarterly payments as they come in until we get further direction from council. We do recommend that the council give direction to staff to negotiate a new agreement, if that is your desire. That would not start any sooner than July 1st of 2014. That would give us some certainty in knowing that we would have two quarters' worth of PEG funds, and we could plan on, on how to utilize those monies. And I am told by our staff that we could easily come up with viable projects that would spend probably all of that money on an annual basis, at least for the next couple of years. But again, we do recognize that there is some value to the school district and some value to the programming that they're developing for Channel 10. The other issue that I want to make sure that the council is aware of, the agreement, the, the agreement that has expired does have a termination provision that requires the district to return all of the equipment back to the city at the time that the agreement expires. We have not pushed the district for that because we've had this pending question with perhaps continuing with the agreement. We don't recommend pulling the trigger on that at this point. It would not benefit the school district to take that equipment away. It would basically effectively end their operations and greatly curtail what they could do there, and the city would end up with a lot of equipment which, which we could surplus, but it wouldn't provide us any, any direct immediate need. Be happy to answer any questions at this time. And again, just to note that the, the council does not need to take any action on this. The agreement has expired, so staff is looking for direction on whether to follow through with the termination of the, of the expired agreement, or if you would like, we can go forward to negotiate an agreement to bring that back for the council's consideration.
Mr. McCleary, I want to mention that you did an excellent job on your staff report. It was very clear, very concise, it covered a lot of issues. I do not have any more questions. Councilmember Laura?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Could you elaborate more on, on changes for our needs? Is that due to the commissions being televised, or is it-
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, that, that is a large part of it. In the past, we were cablecasting just the city council and the planning commission meetings. I'm not a technical expert by any means on this, so I can't get too, too deep into it, but there are ongoing needs that we have in terms of equipment, in terms of making this room more broadcast-ready. We would also like to be able to purchase equipment so that we could set up an alternative site or sites where we could also do broadcast of meetings. I know we've talked about doing meetings at the, at the Boyd Center. In fact, that came up just recently with the cellular tower. As you're well aware, we were planning on holding the special meeting at the Boyd Center to accommodate a larger crowd, and also, we were going to be set up to be able to cablecast that meeting. If we're able to purchase additional equipment, then we could more or less have either a mobile or a secondary site. As it is right now, we pretty much have to break down all the equipment in this room and move it to another location, which is very time-intensive and also limits our, our scheduling ability as well.
Madam Mayor, I have more questions, if I may. In terms of the school, do you know the percentage amount of time that they're using Channel 10? Or have they, have they changed? Have they, have they kept to their agreement, or?
I couldn't give you a specific percentage. I know the district did provide a report back in August to the council. They certainly have done a number of things to provide programming to the channel. I, I think it would be fair to say that it probably not at the level that was originally anticipated in the agreement.
But they're still utilizing it?
They still are.
And just to backtrack a little, sorry, as a follow-up question to my previous one, do you have an idea on the budget to purchase another system for possibly the rec center, or is that not, is that not, do you want direction before you do that?
Um, well, certainly, we would be looking for direction before we spent any, any funds, but I know that was one of the ideas that we had for the additional PEG monies, if they are available to us. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McCleary.
Thank you, Madam.
Anyone from the audience wish to address this issue? I do not have any speaker cards. Okay, back to council. Council's pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I, I definitely understand that needs change as time goes on, and, and if we need to adjust something, I think we should take appropriate measures to do so. But I do, I, I would like to see some dialogues, more dialogue with the school, whether it be with- be with the board or the superintendent, to see if they, what their ideas are in terms of what they could do, because it would be great. I mean, it's just a valuable lesson for the students to learn a little bit about broadcasting, and if the city could help with that, I mean, I'm all for it. But if we also need to consider our needs, I would like a little bit more clarity what that means, and then also discuss with the, like I said, the school district a little bit more what their needs are and maybe work out something.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Yeah, I have a little more historic perspective on it, and yes, I think it is a valuable experience for the Ohi Unified Students to be able to do this. But the equipment, as I said, it's of no value to us to return that. And they're also talking about in this agreement that anything less than 20% is no point. I agree with Councilman Laura. Can we see at what point, talking with the superintendent, that with 30-70 or 40-60 work for them to maintain what they need to do to have students be able to broadcast, and also that we can buy some equipment? So I'm in very much agreement with Councilman Laura on a little bit more information as to what would meet our needs and what will meet theirs. At the moment, we've been giving it all to them, so that apparently is not something that is necessary anymore. So certainly, it's time to look at that. I'm sorry, that's my phone, which I never could hear before. That's what you do when you get hearing aids.
Okay, well, we have that nice background. I'll just reiterate that I pretty much agree with everything you laid out in your staff report. I think making sure that both agencies get a minimum of 20% is reasonable, and it's not always going to be the city needing equipment or the school needing equipment. So I think a dialogue at the end of each year to establish who needs what and for what purpose works well for me.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
I think in theory, the concept of giving funds to the district was a great one, but I, as Mr. McClary said, it didn't seem to be that the programming really matched what we had anticipated. So I think if we're to go forward with any funding to OUSD, we need a better system of accountability to make sure that these funds are being utilized optimally.
Councilmember Blass, did you have any comment?
No, I agree. I think that we need to, I don't know whether staff wants direction on us giving them the ability to negotiate a new contract at this point, or whether you just want some direction to meet with the Unified School District to discuss how this process could best work into the future. So I guess I ask that question of, Mr. McClary, what is it that, are you really looking to negotiate a new contract? Or do you want direction from us to meet with the school district to discuss how it's going to move forward in the future?
Well, if I could be so bold, I think our recommendation would be to direct staff to have that discussion with the superintendent. I did hear your comments this evening, and I think that provides some good direction back to staff. So if that's what the council would like to see, then staff would be ready to have that discussion a little further with the superintendent. And I agree, I think we want to find a way that we can ensure the funds are used optimally for both parties.
And once an agreement is negotiated and reached, it would come back to the city council for review and approval. So that might, does that cover what you had in mind, Councilmember? Any additional direction needed?
That's fine.
Okay, the next item. Item number four, community development department staffing. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The city council had asked for a discussion of, actually, the use of consultants, but the focus on community development. And so this item is put out to initiate that discussion. My primary recommendation is that you keep your options open until we get to budget time, because I think the context of this decision is that there's a lot of money that will be spent one way or another, and you need to weigh decisions on this with decisions on other budget matters. But I do think it's beneficial to get some input on what you'd like to have us ready to discuss at budget time and also to hear from the public on this. I wanted to make a few comments about the budget, just to start with. Since the sort of trough of the recession, TOT has been rising fairly quickly, and sales tax has been rising less quickly but fairly steadily. But I think that we may be towards the part of the curve that starts to flatten out. So we started that period of time with very lean staffing and very low service levels and absolutely no investment in our infrastructure. And as we've come out of that, we've still kept staffing lean, although we've moved it around a little bit, and we've spent, you know, dedicated most of the money to the public infrastructure, which has been the council's top priority. But not only are revenues leveling off, there's a few clouds on the horizon that we need to start thinking about. One has to do with retirement contribution rates. PERS has made a number of changes to the actuarial assumptions that they use and is going to begin a process of ramping up retirement rates, starting not in 1415, but in 1516. But still, anytime we make a long-term commitment on staff, that carries over from year to year, so I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Secondly, retiring medical expense is going to increase. You, over the years, have made a number of reforms to address long-term retiring medical costs, but there are still people going into the system or going into retirement under the old system, and that's actually going to push costs up before costs come down. So we have that to be concerned about. And then another thing that we need to think about is that the successor agency is not going to go on forever, and right now, we're receiving $250,000 per year in administrative costs that pay for successor agency items, but also cover existing staff to some degree. So I'm not saying there's a crisis, I'm just saying that we need to be very careful about spending. As far as planning staff goes, going back to about three years ago, our staffing level during the early phases of the recovery was one-half planner in the planning side of community development. So community development has two sides, the planning side and the building side. In the planning side, we had one-half planner, which was clearly not enough to get the things done that you wanted to get done. The first step we took was to create a position, a full-time position of community development director, and so that raised the staffing level to one full-time person at a fairly high level. And then we went to a full-time director plus a half-time assistant planner. Each of those steps was intended to reduce the amount of consulting work that we did. However, because there were transitions in staff, it was a pretty uneven transition from consulting work to staff work. Having said that, I think with a full-time community development director and a half-time assistant planner, we still will need some consulting assistance when we reach a peak. So planning doesn't go evenly from year to year or even from month to month. Planning comes in big spurts and then troughs, and it goes up and down. And typically, what you try to do is you try to create a base level of staff that can deal with the base level of planning activity and then deal with the peaks, potentially with consultants or supplemental staff. And I kind of think that's where we're at. So that's my analysis of planning. I would like to say that to fully eliminate the need to use consultants, you'd probably have to go to a full-time assistant planner at a cost of about $48,000. So that's one of the options that you have. You could go back to the lower levels that we had before, you could stay at the levels we're at now, or you could go to a higher level of permanent staffing and try and totally eliminate consulting work, which I would not recommend. Building has kind of gone the other direction over that period of time. We did have a full-time individual who served as building official and code enforcement officer and also our building inspector. And during that time, we always also retained consulting services to do plan check. Plan check can involve engineering and can involve some fairly high-level duties, so for those high-level types of things, we had a contract engineer. We had a contract engineer, and we also had a contract plan check firm, which we still have retained through all this time. When that individual retired, we decided to cover the duties of plan check, building official, code enforcement, and building inspection through contract services with our contract planning company. That has cut our costs dramatically, about $80,000 a year. So we're spending a lot less, and I think we're getting actually a higher level of service with the current contractor than we were getting before with the employee. Maybe with less hours, but with more proficiency put in the right places. But you could go back to having a full-time employee. That's one option that's put out there. It's a pretty expensive option. Another thing that I think had been done in the past, before my time though, but something that might be worth considering, is having supplemental part-time assistants for code enforcement. Code enforcement's kind of a unique area of activity. It's also an activity that probably should occur more on off-times, like weekends and holidays and things like that. And we did at one point in time have a part-time code enforcement officer. I don't know how well that went, but the impression I get is that it was helpful. And so that's another staffing option that I've outlined in the report. So the report has a few different options in it. They mostly relate to where we were in the past and what small incremental steps we might take in the future. But there could be other things that we should develop for you further in the next month or so before we get to the budget hearing, and I think that would be the best use of this discussion today. So that concludes my report, and I'd be glad to answer questions.
Any questions from Council Mayor Protim Smith?
What I like about potentially hiring a full-time planner rather than a half-time, a lot of our goals are with neighborhood plans and things like that could be taken on by, if we did have a full-time planner to us, Kathleen would stay ahead, and then we'd have an actual planner. They could take on all those tasks as part of their job description. Whether that would pay for itself, I'm not sure, but in terms of reaching our goals, it may be very fruitful to have the right person in there as a full-time planner to take on the various goals of our community and all. I know neighborhood planning and what's right for the neighborhood has always been an issue that's big with me, and we've never seemed to be able to tackle it as far as different codes for the different neighborhoods and stuff. I'd really like to see us be able to work on that. And with just one or one and a half people, it becomes, well, we'll do that when we have nothing else to do or things are slow. So having a full-time person to assist Kathleen might pay dividends, but it is expensive. As far as having a second building, a code enforcer, it was nice to have someone on weekends. You'd be surprised, a number of people in this town who know that we don't have anyone on weekends, and why does stuff ever show up on the streets and wherever, because there's no one there to enforce it? But I think both of those potentials really depend a lot on when we look at our budget.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I like to agree with Mayor Protim Smith about possibly entertaining that idea of if we do get a full-time, whether it be assistant planner or code enforcer inspector, if that would allow us to tackle some other priorities that we have as a council. And a list would probably be great when that time comes to evaluate whether we want option one, two, or three or four, his ability to understand if the work, the capacity of work that these individuals are going to be doing is more practical. So that's my only comment. I know that we're focusing right now on money, which is always an issue. We always try to be creative with the taxes that we get and try to optimize the ability with that. But we also need to be conscious and see what our priorities and goals are, so.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have one speaker card, Bill Wirek.
Thank you, Bill Wirek, 607 North Blanch. I'm an interested citizen in this matter. I used to do budget development, well, not, I didn't do it, people answered to me that did budget development on fairly large enterprises. And so I'm interested. And one of the things that I found wishing for, in addition to the very, I thought, very good and cogent staff report, Mr. Clark, is a consolidated spreadsheet of exactly, by person, by function, the total amounts being paid to consultants. I don't, I'm having a hard time getting a single view. For example, I noticed that there was a cost for contract plan checking through the building official of $30,000 per year. I've seen some data indicating that that person, in fact, that's one of their functions, they also get money for other functions. But I think it would help the discussion if there was a consolidated of the total amount that the consultants have been getting over, let's say, the past three years by year, by function, broken out one view to supplement the discussion of looking at the different options. I think that would be very valuable. I think it's all public information, and that's the kind of question I'd be asking for if that indeed is okay to, you know, for citizens to look at that kind of data. So that's the one suggestion I have made to help advance this discussion. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, when we look at the yearly amount paid to a consultant, when we look at that amount, have we backed out any fees paid by applicant for that person's work?
That's an important consideration, and there's several different ways it can be presented. One way is to back out the fees, but another way is to show how much fees we've collected and how much we've paid out, which might have some advantages, too. I think we can get at the issue you're raising and also the issue that Mr. Wirek's raising one way or another. But one of the things that I think is important is to somehow present, when we do this, is the fluctuation, because it is very uneven, and that's part of what you're going to have to wrestle with, I think.
Councilmember Clapp?
One thing that is a benefit to a consultant, if I'm understanding this, is that you aren't going to have the liability, the additional financial liability of a regular employee. You're not going to have the retirement and all those other things as well. I would like to know what it would cost for an in-house employee versus a consultant for the same number of hours.
And before we get too involved up here, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Any other questions, comments?
Madam Mayor, one more idea that came up when Mr. Wirek was speaking. I know we have allocated money towards, like, for example, when Mayor Protim Smith mentioned neighborhood watching. So I don't know if that would be appropriate also to put, neighborhood planning, if that would be appropriate to add maybe a slot there with potentially, I don't know. So just give us a better picture of the overall budget.
Okay, so have we given you the information you need as far as reviewing the options?
Yeah, I think so.
We didn't really give you much.
It was helpful. I think I've got some work to do now.
Okay. And your second recommendation is to authorize the city manager to retain up to $10,000 in contract planning services from qualified professionals on an interim basis until a permanent staffing solution is implemented. Do we have?
That's fine with me.
Someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion. I authorize that the city manager can retain up to ten thousand dollars in contract planning services from qualified professionals on an interim basis until a permanent staffing solution is implemented.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is designation of voting alternate for 2014 Southern California Association of Government, that's SCAG, General Assembly.
Mr. Clark, or, well, Mr. Clark, are you going to turn it over to our city clerk?
Absolutely.
Ms. Bayshore?
Hi, good evening. It's the time of year again to consider sending an alternate to the Southern California Association of Government General Assembly Business Meeting. We would send an alternate because Carl Morehouse has told me that he's going to represent us as our district representative. And so basically, I'm here to find out if someone would like to go. There will be no cost to the city because SCAG covers the cost of the hotel, and it's being held in Indian Wells. So is anyone interested in going?
Our VCTC representative, is that still Councilmember Clapp?
Yes.
And our alternate is, who's the alternate?
There is no alternate.
Oh, there is no, I knew that. Okay. So would you be interested in attending as the alternate?
It's in May, beginning, May first.
It's Thursday, May first.
It's hard for me to plan two days in advance with my life right now.
The reason I ask is oftentimes the representative for VCTC or representative from VCOG.
Mm-hmm. Which is, Paul, Paul, are you interested?
I can't, I can't do it at that time.
No, I can't do it either.
And I can't tell you right now whether I can do it. When is the drop dead date on when you need to know?
They would like to know as soon as possible. They've contacted me.
I'll let you know as soon as possible.
I could, I think I could make it.
Could do it?
Yeah, I could make it schedule.
That'd be so much better for me.
I went last year, and I thought the first year was very confusing how everything worked and just a lot of, and this year, I feel a little bit more confident on how the schedule goes and what that, so it's, I don't.
Well, if you'd be able to go, that would be very helpful for me.
So do we have a motion to designate Councilmember Laura?
So move.
Yeah.
So move, okay, second.
All those in favor, say aye, aye? Those opposed?
Okay.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a request for reconsideration of the motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance requiring that all members of the Planning Commission be residents of the city of Ojai. Mr. Smith, a Mr. Smith.
I see, I see.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
She's here now, so I heard that. Has she complained after a while?
I just wanted to briefly explain the procedures for a motion for reconsideration because it doesn't come up that often. Under Roberts' Rules of Order, any member of the city council who has voted for a motion that has passed can make a motion to reconsider that vote if it's made by the time of the next regular council meeting, after which the vote was made. In this case, all five members voted for the original motion, so any council member could make a motion to reconsider. A second can also be made by any council member, whether they voted for the motion or not. That motion, if it is introduced and passed by the city council, reopens the discussion on the original motion. So the first discussion you would have is whether or not you want to reopen the discussion on this matter. Once the, if it passes and the discussion is reopened, then you can have further discussion, you can have further public input, and you can choose to take a vote on the original motion, excuse me, have an alternate motion, or even a motion to table. So in this case, council members Clapp and Mayor Protem Smith have requested a motion for reconsideration, and they have provided the discussion that is in this report, and I would turn it over to them to explain the reasons for that request.
Should we determine whether or not it's to be reconsidered before we get into discussion, or is it okay for discussion?
I think process-wise, first should be the motion to reconsider. Motion be put before the members, and then you discuss that motion.
Well, I think the motion to reconsider, the reason I voted yes was I saw that I already had three yeses, and so if I voted yes, then I could reconsider it. So I must let you know that when this first came up, that's why I voted yes. I think the reasons for-
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote, directing staff to prepare an ordinance for introduction and adoption, requiring all planning commissioners must reside within city limits.
Do we have a second?
So we have a-
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this. The motion is to reconsider.
Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Okay, now what?
So now, the motion, so now the motion, actually, now the motion's back before the body.
Right.
The motion was made to direct staff to prepare the ordinance revising the planning commission. That is now before the body for further deliberation.
Mr. Clark, did you want to add any more information, or should we go straight to Mayor Protem Smith and Mayor Protem Clark or whatever?
Whatever on that's all.
I don't have anything to add at this time, so I think that you should go to the maker and seconder of the motion to hear their discussion.
All right.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Thank you very much. As I said, I did vote yes, but it was with the idea that I can reconsider it. I think, though in a perfect world, we would have perhaps a huge selection of people from the city, but the fact is, our geography is such that two-thirds of our population live outside of the city, and that means two-thirds of our talent and the people who love the Ojai Valley live outside the city. And I guarantee you that most people, when they're shown houses by their realtor, they have no idea if the house is in the city or in the county. I certainly did not. The amount of talent that we would limit ourselves to by just leaving it with commissioners have to live in the city is huge. I think the reasons for this are amply put out in page two of two in the discussion, and were, they were voiced by me and by Councilwoman Clapp, and Mr. Clark basically did a good job in writing them up. I don't know if I could go through them for the public's sake, and maybe I'll do that right now. We brought up the following points, that the current and past members of the Planning Commission who are not residents of the city have done an excellent job, and in some cases have volunteered many hours of professional expertise, which goes beyond the basic requirements of the office. The current members of the Planning Commission who are not residents of the city have business interests and in some cases, personal property in the city, and as immediate neighbors are impacted by the policies of the city. As such, their interests are similar to those who are residents of the city. The municipal code specifies certain desirable qualifications for members of the Planning Commission, including that at least one member must have a license to practice architecture, and that at least one member must have training and experience in art, building, construction, civil engineering, land use planning, or landscape design. The applicants most qualified in those areas may be non-residents. The city council did not consult with the Planning Commission prior to voting on the residency requirement, and I, this is an issue that I didn't even think of at the time, but that is exactly what happened. The residency requirement is only supported by a small number of people who spoke at the city council meeting and does not reflect the popular support for the entire Planning Commission, including the members who are not residents of the city. And the city council could, we could consider other boundaries, and one that made sense to myself and to Councilwoman Clapp was that we consider that planning commissioners need to live within the school district boundaries, which end at Barber Street, but they do include Miners Oaks and the East End. And since then, there are two letters that I've received, both from Katrina Schmidt, who was a planner at the city, and one from Tucker Adams, who both highly recommend that we do have planning commissioners who come from all over the valley. I've also gotten a few phone calls, so that's my comment on that.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to speak. I, there's a map that is up right now, and that's the Ojai Valley proper, and I believe, Rhonda, you're going to click her? Okay. While she's doing that, I would like to actually read into the record two letters that we've received. One from Katrina Reisch Schmidt, who was a planner in the city of Ojai, and Tucker Adams, who was a planning commissioner for years and lived one block out of the city limits. This is what Tucker Adams said. Dear councilmembers, having been made aware of your recent vote to limit planning commissioners to Ojai City residents only through the Ojai Valley News, I watched the meeting proceedings on the city website. I was surprised and extremely disappointed by this short-sighted decision and believe it merits additional discussion and revisiting. It seems important, fair, and reasonable to approach this important policy decision in a more methodical way than the discussion reflected. I was struck in watching the meeting video by the apparent casual tone of discussion and lack of wider public input that concluded with what I believe to be a momentous policy decision that will certainly have a substantial effect on the course of the city of Ojai. The small number of citizens in your audience that evening were not necessarily representative of the entire valley or even the city itself, and when opening a discussion of this importance, the council might give it attention and weight it deserves by soliciting information and discussion from the parties affected, including planning staff, current commissioners, and a larger public group. There was no mention of this type of input discussed in these proceedings. There seemed to be a lack of clarity regarding which commissions were affected and no real and substantive reasons given for decisions made either way, including the decision made to leave the Arts Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission as is, but to change the policy for the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission plays a critical and fundamental role in shaping the form and experience of our city, and indeed influencing areas of interface within our whole valley. Our current Planning Commission is astounding in its expertise, professionalism, and particularly in its willingness to go far beyond the parameters of this already demanding volunteer job, to volunteer additional hundreds of hours of time dedicated to considerations for the benefit of our community, including our streets, our tree cover, bike and pedestrian safety, our light shed, issues related to the environment, architectural and building codes, and so much more. It seems as though the council would want to have the very best possible, most highly qualified and skilled people available to serve on each city commission. The city of Ojai benefits from having planning commissioners with technical expertise and professional experience in areas of concern. We are a small city in a large valley. There are many talented, passionate, and qualified people in all parts of our city and our valley. Citizens don't have to live in the boundaries of the city to want to contribute, to care deeply, to be willing to share their experience, pardon me, their expertise, their time and experience for the benefit of the city they care about. Limiting ourselves is not the best interest of the city of Ojai. You are the body that appoints these commissioners. Presumably, you are appointing people you trust, people who are qualified and excited to contribute to the benefit of the city, not people who are in some way looking to avoid conforming to a rule or creating rules others must abide by, but they don't. That's a very low bar to set, especially in the face of the ongoing excellent job our planning commission does for all of us. Finally, in the prior meeting discussion, there seemed to be references to the Planning Commission as a final decision-making body. The city website describes the Planning Commission as acting in an advisory capacity to the city council. Decisions made by the Planning Commission can be and sometimes are appealed to the city council for final decision. This is an important point on which, to be clear, I urge you to continue the Planning Commission in its current size and number of members who live outside the city boundaries. Thank you for your attention. Tucker Adams, former city of Ojai planning commissioner. Then I'm going to read from Katrina Reisch Schmidt. Dear Mayor Strobel and city council members, it has come to my attention that the city council voted to direct staff to prepare an ordinance regarding requiring all seven planning commissioners to reside within the city limits. I strongly encourage the city council to reconsider this directive and keep the options open, allowing for three members of the Planning Commission to live outside of the city limits as it stands in the current code. The current ordinance requires that of the seven planning commissioners, one must be an architect who has a current license, one must be in the construction, civil engineering, land use planning, or related field. Three of the seven commissioners must be, quote, maybe, pardon me, quote, non-residents, unquote. Oftentimes, in our small city of approximately eight thousand people, there are no willing or able professional architects, or contractors, or planners who live in the city limits. If there are a few living in the city limits, oftentimes they are not willing to have this role in their own community because of the local politics, or perhaps they are actively working and do not have the time to dedicate to a voluntary government position while still attending to a family. Whatever the reason, it seems short-sighted to limit this very important commission to members of the small, physical boundaries of the city, which is why I've had the map put up, because I wanted people to see perspective of really the small area of the city limits itself. And you'll notice in that, in that blue outlined area, the northern portion really has no residences, is very, has very few streets, as well as the southern portion, and the east, the western portion, pardon me, is very lightly populated as well, because it mostly includes the hospital and the school and other areas where there's very few residences. The central areas where it's concentrated, where there's, where there are homes. And so I wanted to see in the broader scope, really, how small the city of Ojai is. Having the flexibility to go out beyond the city limits into the greater community to find an architect or land use planner or landscape designer who has credentials and firsthand knowledge of the Ojai city, the Ojai community is ideal. In our small valley of approximately twenty-eight thousand people, downtown Ojai, the arcade, the park, the recreation department, the grocery stores, the bank, et cetera, is the heart of the community. Clearly, one who lives in Miners Oaks or in the East End understands Ojai and its culture, since they spend their time doing business and playing in the city limits. Since the Planning Commission is a body that makes recommendations to the city council and one that is quasi-judicial, interpreting city council policy and ordinances, which decisions can be appealed to the city council, in nature, it is good to have a broader pool from which to draw applicants. However, I do agree that ensuring city council members live in the city is what really matters, being that it is the council that actually adopts the policies and ordinances within the city limits. City council, don't limit your options by restricting planning commission members to the geographic city boundary. Being able to have the option to potentially find the most capable professional and the highest qualified community volunteer in the greater Ojai Valley is truly a great benefit to the city. Katrina Reisch Schmidt, resident within the city limits. And I want people to know I do not solicit these letters from either one of these individuals. So in closing, I would like to say that we've already lost Paul Crabtree, a very valued commissioner. He is a highly qualified planner, and I'm sorry to see him go. And I agree that this suggestion was made by a handful of individuals and was brought before city council, but it now threatens to dismantle, in the words of our newest commissioner, Chester Jaujelo, "The dream team we have assembled to help lead our community into the future." These are the commissioners that live outside the city limits that we will lose. Kathleen Nolan. Kathleen Nolan's education is very, very impressive. She has a professional certificate of landscape architecture. She's a graduate of the University of California of LA, at LA. She has a bachelor- LA. She has a Bachelor of Science in ornamental horticulture. She's a graduate of Cal Poly, St. Louis of Ispo. She's an urban permaculture, has an urban permaculture certificate. And she belongs to the International Development Permaculture Certificate, and she has a license in landscape architecture. She's a landscape contractor, and she's a PCA for the state of California. Those are three of her licenses. She's also has membership and affiliations with American Society of Landscape Architects, California Landscape Contractors Association, Worldwide Permaculture Network, California Native Plant Society, and CalIPC. In the community, she was on the Tree Advisory Board of the City of Ojai. She helped write the Community Forest Management Plan. She has been working diligently for several years now on the Complete Streets Project. She also wrote, helped write the Model Water Landscape Ordinance, as well as has devoted countless hours in drafting a grant for, oh, what is it?
Sustainability.
The neighborhood planning, and which would be in the amount of six figures. A lot of money. I also pulled up on the internet a little story about Kathleen Nolan and the time she took out of her day, free of charge, to host a garden, a community garden demonstration on how to plant native and drought tolerant plants. She had over 35 people attend this, and it's quite impressive that she was willing to take the time out of her day to do that. So I just wanted to point out Kathleen's qualifications and what we'd be losing if we did not allow somebody from the outside of the city limits to participate in, on the Planning Commission. The next person that is someone we will lose if we do pass this change in how we draw from our community for Planning Commission is Stephen Foster. Stephen Foster is a licensed architect. He is a member of the UC, USCBC, the Green Building Council. She's a, he's a member of the California Board of Architectural, pardon me, he has a license for the California Board of Architecture, and he's also licensed with a general contracting license, something that is required on the city Planning Commission, that we have a licensed general contractor. This, a display of his humility is his website. There's very little of him talking of himself. But one thing that I did find among his qualifications is that he is a, has what's called an LEED AP, which is a LEED certification. And LEED is an organization that devotes itself to green building practices. And that is another person that we would lose if we were not to have somebody from the outside of the city limits. The third person is Lawrence Nicklin. And Lawrence has been on the commission for a few years now and has been a tremendous asset and has brought expertise that, from across the world, to our community, which is very exciting to me. Lawrence studied horticulture, botany, and landscape design at the Cape University of Technology in Cape Town, South Africa in the early 80s. Before landing in Ojai, Lawrence's landscaping career began in Kreshenbosch Botanical Gardens in South Africa, where he worked and studied. I was fortunate enough to go to those gardens, and they're magnificent. And South African botany is a fascinating and beautiful subject. He was involved in scientific plant research and propagation of scientific plant collections. He gathered material from herbarium collections, performed cut flower production and research, and designed and planted landscape displays of native plants. Lawrence also conducted a series of botanical and horticulture lectures. From 1987 to 1999, Lawrence became self-employed, launching a wholesale plant production nursery and bedding plant production operation where they produced over a million units a year for supply to the Cape metropolitan area. They also performed growing for government and municipal departments. Their tree and shrubbery nursery, Constantia Wholesale Nursery, was one of the largest operations in the Cape area and supplied plant material throughout South Africa and Namibia. They operated on 30 acres and had a staff of 100 employees. In 1988, Lawrence spent one year in Ojai, California, where he assisted in design and installation of the African Garden at the Center for Earth Concerns. During the next 10 years, he spent six weeks a year in Ojai working on this project. Lawrence came to Ojai permanently in 1999, when he opened Plantation Landscaping and Design. In addition to hundreds of residential designs, Lawrence has also designed and installed Ojai's Rotary Park inside the city limits of Ojai, here in Ojai. He was involved in the design and installation of demonstration gardens at Seaside Gardens and Carpinteria, and the new Ventura Botanical Gardens. I just wanted to just give an example of the kind of talent that is outside of the city limits that we would lose if we would no longer have our policies remain the same. So as I've mentioned at the last council meeting, I believe this change would damage the sense of community of this valley, a community that everyone has enjoyed for decades. The love of this valley has no boundaries, has no boundaries. Everyone here has a stake in what happens in the input from those who live outside the city limits, adds a much-needed perspective that enables our leaders to make decisions that are best for the city and the valley as a whole. I hope my colleagues agree that this is not the best idea for our community, and join me in withdrawing the direction to staff to revise our Planning Commission appointment policy. Thank you.
Any comments from, any other comments from council?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Laura?
If I may, I definitely, I'm always a proponent of getting community input, and I think it's good for us when we take such a decision that is changing. I mean, it definitely is, we're all, we all have to think about what our unintended consequences are. And I really appreciate you guys bringing this up, if it really is more of discussion and we really want community input, because, I mean, even though there's vast variety in the county, I absolutely agree, there's also a lot of talent within the city limits. So let's please not discourage us to say that we can't find qualified commissioners in the city. I think that we need to be really careful with, with holding respect to our immediate constituents, because I think that in this city, since I've been elected, I've been really amazed by how much talent there is within the city limits. With that being said, also in regards to, oh, in regards to enough input, I mean, this is always a reoccurring theme about doing or creating decisions on different issues, whether it's environmental or government or policy, is that it is always started by six people. And sometimes you don't go out there and extend the extra hand to get the opinions of our citizens. So, I mean, I think that's been a standard thing that we've done, since I've been here for the most part, unless it's something that's really important, like the cell tower, that a lot of community have participated. So, but again, I really encourage this process. If we want some more dialogue within the community, I really think that we should. But let's not be mistaken that the decisions, that it is an advisory commission, but the decisions really have an immediate effect on their jurisdiction, just like the county has their county supervisors, where they're obligated to go by what the county says. So just because we're limiting or possibly eliminating our boundaries to city limits does not mean we cannot have a good working relationship with our valley. So that's another misconception that I do, I do want to make sure that we clarify, that we just don't say by us eliminating commissioners from valley is gonna automatically put us, alienate us from the valley. Because as somebody that grew up in the city and in the valley, both as a childhood, as a child and as a teenager and now as an adult, I do see somewhat of a difference. But again, if it is up for discussion, I'm more than happy to entertain that.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to hear, no, I'd like to hear from our speakers. Paul Bergman? Bill Warwick?
Bill Warwick speaking, as an individual citizen, 607 North Blanch. I want to do, I spoke on this issue when it came up last time, and I want to repeat a couple of things that I think are still relevant. But I want to preface that by saying, I have to admit I'm a little uncomfortable having this debate being about personalities, or about specific persons' credentials. You know, we're talking about a governance structure here, long-term, long view. We're talking about something that wouldn't take effect, you know, very quickly at all, if indeed it ends up being adopted or not, because it's a phase in about that for years on existing terms expiring. But I think we need to, my perspective anyway, about thinking about government structure is that the government's structure is really above all of us. You know, we serve, that governance structure should serve the long-run interests of the city, and issues of individual personalities and individual credentials, I think, are somewhat below that, frankly. In terms of the issue of governance structure, I mentioned that one thing that bothered me on the existing system is that it's possible, it can happen, under the current structure, where working majority of the Planning Commission is three non-residents and one resident. That bothers me. It continues to bother me that that can happen. And on the issue of the principle, I guess is a better way of saying it, that if you're, you know, you should have skin in the game if you're making decisions. And I understand the issue of the identity of the valley being more general. But I still think it's a good principle that you start with. You start saying, you know, if you're making decisions affecting people's lives, whether as an advisory position or not, you should start from the principle that it's better to have, you're affected by the decisions that you're living with the decisions you make. That's a good principle to start with. And then you, you know, if there's issues of not being able to recruit people that are qualified, sufficient, then, you know, you move away from that principle. But I think you start with that principle and demonstrate why that principle should be diverted from. And so, you know, I think it should be demonstrated, in other words, if there's people that aren't qualified over the years that can serve on the Planning Commission, then, you know, again, demonstrate that. But if you can't demonstrate that, I think it's still a good principle to start with. So those are my thoughts. I think that also, just to wind up, it shouldn't be just staying the way it is, or doing, you know, or doing all the way, and I mentioned this at the last meeting. There, for me, and even though people have chastised me for saying this, I think it's better to maybe make a maximum of two, because at least then you have equal number of residents and non-residents being potentially the working majority. So I think there's adjustments that could be made to address the best way of employing some of these principles in the governance structure. Thank you.
John Merck?
Good evening, Mayor Strobel and members of the council. You know, I've been on Planning Commission for 15 years. We meet in this room, and we're surrounded by photographs of people who made this city what it is today. And in their wisdom, the original planners of this city put the Planning Commission together as seven members, three of whom are from outside the city. Sorry?
Three of them can be.
Can be, can be, can be up to three. Service on the Planning Commission is entirely voluntary. It's incumbent on all of us to consider the long-term implications of every action that we make. And I just want to say, we can't plan in a vacuum. The city of Ojai, as you can see from the map, is only part of the Ojai Valley. And every decision that we make on the Planning Commission really affects the entire valley. We also have, as Councilmember Clapp pointed out, we have a wealth of resources available in the Ojai Valley, which I think we'd be very foolish and sortcited not to draw on. And I think, you know, the decisions that we make as a city really affect the entire valley. I just want to say your actions at the previous meeting have already, they threw our commission into complete disarray and have already cost us one of our commissioners. So I strongly urge you to reconsider the motion and return the Planning Commission to its original configuration. Thank you.
Steve Foster?
Mayor Strobel, staff, and council members. I'm one of the outside-the-limits Planning Commissioners. And I first started considering this, I gotta say, I was set back by how this was handled. There was no discussion brought forward to the Planning Commission at all. We heard it the next day with everybody else. That said, it causes me to think that back when fellow architect and former city council member David Burry first asked me to consider being on this commission several years ago. And my first response to him was, "But David, I don't live in the city limits." And he said to me that it's not about address. After he explained to me, of course, that it was in the ordinance that I could occupy a space on the commission. He did then say to me that, you know, Steve, it's about qualified people. We're looking for expertise in the specific fields. You might have the potential to be that individual. And that's what got me to thinking about it, seriously, because I really didn't have any desire to do this in the first place. As an architect, though, I feel compelled to serve my community. This is where I work. My office is across the street. I've been there for over 10 years. I spend more waking hours in this community, in this city, than I do outside of it. My work is here. I work with citizens of this community day in and day out. And to infer that we are not invested in this community, in this city, I don't get it. I really don't get it. I think we are, and I'm just talking for myself. I'm not even going to begin to quote what Betsy was saying about Kathy Nolan and her credentials. Unbelievable, the accountability that goes there, the amount of time that is spent there. I dare say that this city could not afford to pay someone to do what she does, but it's on a volunteer basis. And that's what we're about here. The same goes for Lawrence, volunteer basis. We're here to give of our hearts, to serve this community, to do our best. And that is all we're about, period. I hope this is understood and that this is considered by you and not just misdirected once again. I thank you for the opportunity to do this. Let's not limit our political, our potential resources by just refraining to the community. I agree with Councilmember Laura that, you know, there's a lot of talent here, but let's not limit that potential. We don't know where things are gonna go today or tomorrow. Why limit ourselves? I thank you for this time.
David Gonzalez?
Thank you, David Gonzalez, speaking as an independent citizen of Ojai within the city limits, 412 Topatopa Drive. I recently became aware of this issue and did a little bit of research into it and how things went down with the council and what is in consideration. I'd just like to reiterate some of the points that have already been brought up. The situation of getting volunteers for something, especially when it's very important, is a hard one. Limiting your resources in any way, or limiting participants who are very capable to join a committee that's so important, it's not the best course unless there is some dire consequence that could come from expanding your range of options. I think you should consider that when you have such great talent available. I think you should consider that when you have such great talent available. The other idea is that, I believe the spirit of the configuration and the law that you're trying to put into place is that the Ojai city is best served and that the people contributing their expertise do have a love for the city, a concern for the city, direct consequences for their own actions within the decisions that they're making as well. And I think we've seen that historically proven true and proven very successful with the current configuration. So I would ask you to carefully reconsider making any changes to that. Thank you.
Tucker Adams.
Good evening. I'm Tucker Adams. I live at 924 Amber Lane in the city of Ojai. You heard the letter that I wrote and I don't have lots more to say, but I do want to reiterate that things have changed a lot since I started on the planning commission many years ago, actually on redevelopment. And at the time I started, it was a group of citizens who were really kindly giving their time and making decisions that were important, but there was no particular expertise on that, in that group. I think they were probably living up to the, to the letter of the requirements, but probably not, nothing like what evolved. The kind of expertise that you benefit from is incredible, this group that you have now. And, and actually, I think people are attracted to working with other experts. So by choosing excellent people, by choosing people who are well-qualified and not limiting yourself to the boundaries of the city, which you've heard from, you know, many people, I think is in the very best interest of the city of Ojai. That's what I hope you're about. It certainly, I know the, what the planning commission is about. And it's disappointing to me to turn our lens more tightly, to close our doors in any way to the much larger community that we live in, interact with, depend on. All the stuff that happened at the very beginning of this meeting with CERT and, and, you know, all the things that we recognized early in the very beginning of this meeting, we're all about the community, the larger community. I think we owe the, we owe all of ourselves the benefit of using the talent that we have in our larger community. You are not obligated to find three people from outside the city limits. It is an option. It's part of your option to create a planning commission that has excellence. So I would very much urge you to leave it the way it is because I think it's working great. I think it was intended well and I hope you do that. Thank you.
Rosalie Zabilla. I'm probably not getting that right yet.
Rosalie Zabilla. You did. Mayor Strobel, council members and staff. I'm Rosalie Zabilla. I'm one of the two new planning commissioners. And based on your recent decision to restrict commissioners to city residents, I'm concerned that your newest commissioner is on the fast track to being your most senior member. During my short tenure as planning commissioner, I have gotten an opportunity to grasp not only how much work is involved to do the job properly, but how much time and energy the rest of the commissioners have devoted over the years to both the regularly scheduled meetings and ad hoc committees. We are talking about literally hundreds, thousands of hours of time volunteered for the benefit of our city. For the council to now invite non-residents, non-city residents to just resign or term out when no real problem has even been identified is a sort of slap in the face to those non-residents, however unintended. Because of the turnover in staff and nature of contract labor employed, our development director has already noted a loss of institutional memory. Why on earth would we be doing anything to contribute to that problem by risking losing people who know what happened when? I don't believe the city can afford that. If there's a problem with any commissioner, then make sure procedures are in place to deal with the problem. Absent that, let's not change the rules just because it sounds good while completely disregarding how such rules might be interpreted by those most directly affected. That's not about personalities, that's about people. Thank you.
Kathy Nolan.
Kathleen Dolan, planning commissioner, and I do live outside of the city. And first of all, I want to thank the city of Ojai for allowing me to serve. I've lived in the valley for over 30 years and I have not once resided within the city limits. I've had a business license with the city for over 20 years, actually had my office in the city up until recently. My kids attended the school district. We, we've used the city of Ojai. We, you know, drove on the streets, used your sidewalks, ride our bikes. My kids have gone to all the parks, used the playground equipment. And I volunteer because it's a way for me to say thank you to the city. I think it was brought up earlier, someone had mentioned about when people buy their houses, sometimes they don't even know they're in their city limit. I believe I was in Esca when I found out I wasn't in the city limits, but oh, good, I am in the school district. And I have clients in the city and I have some clients, new clients that moved to Ojai. And we're at the start of a project and they say, oh yeah, we're in the city limits. And I go, I'm not so sure because they're in the opelado. And then I checked the assessor's parcel map and lo and behold, they find out they're not within the city limits. So there is that gray area. But I'm not here to say, it's not about me, I'm looking at longevity here. And I urge you to just be open to allowing some outsiders to be on the commission. I also want to say that I do believe having seven commissioners rather than five is really beneficial. I look at our commissioner, commission now and we have such a variety of people with great expertise, knowledge and experience that brings a lot to the table and a lot to our decision-making. Another thing that I think was brought up, it may have been at another meeting, and it was about term limits. I would encourage you to at least allow a commissioner to have two full terms. There's a lot to know. There's a lot of different arenas that we have to look at and address. And it does take several years to get our feet wet, so to speak. I may have talked to other commissioners and they had the same feeling. So, and that kind of gets back to the thing about a rotation with staff also, when you're constantly moving people in and out, there's that time lag of getting people up to speed. And there's something to having some longevity and that experience to bring in new people and not rotate it too quickly. Once again, I wanted to say thank you and I just encourage you to look at it. And I look at it, I look at it for the bigger picture and that's part of the reason why I do what I do. But once again, it's not about me. I think I'm looking towards the future. I'm not always going to be here. You're not going to be here and not, and my commissioners, our new people are going to come on board. But I think we all want the best for the city and that's, you know, my vision. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Dale?
I'm tired of sitting. Thank you though for hearing us. I'm Dale Hanson. I do live in the city. I hardly know where to begin. I appreciate all of our planning commissioners. I know they bring a lot to the table. I know they work hard. My short experience on the board that I was appointed to gives me a lot of insight and they're into much deeper things than we are. It's not about personality, it's not about any of them, and I know they're all invested. I mean, I know them and I appreciate and respect every one of them. I'm sorry we lost Paul Crabtree. I think that was not because he wasn't a resident, though. I think he does live in the city. I think it was because of some absenteeism and he's a real loss because he, I know is a brilliant man and I wish there was some way we could Skype him in or whatever. I'm sorry. I'm glad to hear all of that about Lawrence Nicklin. I didn't know he was so accomplished and sorry that we lost him. I, I do think, I'm not quite sure how to say this, I'm not trying to point a finger at anybody, but I think the way it was handled was maybe not good. I think it caught the planning commissioners off. I understand that, I spoke with a couple of planning commissioners and I understand that they were really caught off guard by, they were like surprised and maybe there should have been a different way of doing it. I do believe that those that weigh in on the laws, even though I know they don't make them, I think that they should live where they weigh in on. I am perfectly willing, however, to concede that two of them may be outside of the city so that we don't have a majority vote with some, with more the non-residents than the residents. I think I've said everything I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Scott, and then I'll get to you.
I want to address three points here tonight. One is, two of them actually are from people who used to live in town. One is David Burry. And I've spoken to this statement that he made before when I've been up here. And it was when the council was asked to reverse a decision made by the planning commission. And when it became David's turn to speak and he was mayor, he said he didn't really understand why the council would vote to nullify a decision by the planning commission. He said, the reason that we choose these people is because we believe them, we trust them, we think they're capable, and they're there to take work off of our shoulders. And I think that none of you up there would appoint anyone to the planning commission that you didn't feel you could trust in the, in the least point in their ability to make sound decisions. And I think the ability to make a sound decision is not described geographically. About the third year that I was the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, I had come up against an issue and I couldn't decide what to do. I couldn't decide how to handle it. And at that time, Jim Engel, who was the executive director for the land conservancy, was on our board and I'd been impressed by his ability to come up with a completely different point of view on any issue that came before us. And I asked him, what do I do? And he asked me a number of questions about if I'd thought about A, B, C, or D. And I said, yes, and I still can't make a decision. And he said, when it comes to that situation where you just don't know what to do, then you need to decide on the basis of what is best for the organization. And I think that's imperative here, too. What is best for the organization, in this case, that's the city of Ojai. And again, I don't know necessarily that that can be addressed geographically. I think that there may well be plenty of people who could serve on the planning commission within the city limits and we might be able to fill all seven seats. But as Katrina said, or maybe it was Tucker in her letter, these people may not be A, willing or able to find the time to do that. So that makes that point moot. And the third thing is the description of, of the commission itself and the word can. There can be up to three. That doesn't mean there has to be three or that there always will be three. It could be six and one, it could be five and two. It may be four and three for a very long time. There are plenty of people close to me who absolutely stamp their feet and say, I will not have someone who does not live in my city tell me how to live in my city. And while sometimes that may rankle, I have found that in the years that I've attended planning commission meetings, I've disagreed with the people who live in the city as much or more often than I do with those who live outside the city. So to me, that too is, is a non-issue. I think what we want here, as Betsy said, are the best qualified people that we can find. And again, the description is they can, there can be up to three. And I think that is, that is the issue there. If it turns out that one of the three commissioners who lives outside the city limits just can't live with the situation and resigns and we fill that seat with somebody who lives within the city limits, then that's the way it is. But I really think that this whole question of geography is, is not that important to me. And I just urge you to make some, you know, take some really solid consideration on this idea. Thank you.
Remember to give us your name for the record.
Absolutely. John Lambert. I live in Terryman Lane, one of those outlying western suburbs of the city, parts of the city. The assumption has to be, and I think it's very true, that the job of the council is to look out for the city, to do the very best for the city, to make sure that what happens on behalf of the city is as good as it can be. That's a given. I understand, listening to the discussion this evening, that the commissioners, be they the arts commissioners or the planning commission or any ad hoc committees, are actually appointed by this council. You're interviewing them, you discuss it, you make the decisions. The basic idea is to find the best people. I cannot understand how one would want to handcuff oneself in looking for the best people. I made one of the best decisions of my life 14 years ago and moved here from the greater New York area. At one point, I had the privilege of being asked to apply for a position with the mayor's office in New York. I did not live in the city. So I had to decline the offer. They have 4 million people to choose from in New York City. We have 8,000. I think looking for the very best talent is the most important thing. Your job will be to screen them. I can't imagine anyone choosing to live in the Ojai Valley who doesn't just love this valley and love the hub of it, which is our city. So I encourage you to remain as it is with you doing the screening as you always have and just find the very best people to offer us their time, their energy and their expertise. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. State your names.
1125 Del Prado Court. I wasn't going to speak, but I, oh, thank you. I'm compelled to just note that this is all about reaction. Everyone is reacting, people who suggested that planning commissioners all be from the city were reacting to a mishandled application. Our wonderful commissioners here are reacting to lack of notification. Everyone's still upset about the last two months. Is there any way you all could table it or put it on the agenda for the next meeting so that more people can think about what they really want, what's really best for the city and the greater city, which is the valley? I mean, the city's always had the sphere of influence over the valley. The valley influences the city. So I can see this, I've been listening with great interest to everybody who spoke. I agree with mostly everything everybody said. So I think we should think about it a little more, give citizens time to calm down and really think about what they're asking for in saying all the commissioners need to be from the city or not need to be from the city. I, I mean, obviously, we've got a great, hugely talented commission. We're all reacting to a very mishandled application. That's what I think. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clapp.
It was mentioned that this isn't about personalities or about people. It was mentioned that this isn't about personalities, or about people. That's not why I live in this valley, and that's not why I care about people, my friends, is because it isn't about them. To me, this is about the people that make up this valley. Yes, we have a structure, a governmental structure, but it's made up of the people. And I hope I never come to the point where I don't consider the people when I'm making decisions. And you bet I'm considering the people, and the unintended consequences of the potential decision this council might make, about these people that have devoted so much time and energy to a community they love, and they just happen to live outside the city limits. That's frightening to me, that we would even consider, as, I think it was Tucker said earlier, that we would turn inward so much. It doesn't benefit our community, it doesn't benefit our town, it doesn't benefit the world to turn inward, because the world's gotten too small. And to not acknowledge that, and to reach out and get the best people we can, again, as I've said before, would be a horrible disservice to this community, and I couldn't support it.
Anyone else?
Well, I think I'll just, I think I'll make the practical advice that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I think what we have now is very excellent. We have seven people. Up to three can be out of the city, all seven can be in the city, whatever. It's worked. We've had a tremendously talented pool. I know exactly what Tucker's talking about. We used to have planning commissioners who were very nice people and loved the city, but they were not necessarily skilled. I mean, my favorite was always Marge Fay. I loved Marge, you know, and she'd look at a project, and she'd say, "I like this project, and that's it," or she'd say, "I don't like this project," and that was it. Or, "I hate oak trees," or something like that. I mean, we stumbled through it. I mean, everybody on it loved the town, but now we have seven people not only love the valley, but are actually, have an area of expertise. And I think that's what you were talking about, the old planning commissioner. But we, you know, if it ain't fixed, don't broke, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I would stay that, say that we leave it as is. Anybody wants to make a motion to that effect?
Not yet.
Okay.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I mean, in kind of a unique position, having served on the planning commission for 10 years. I served on the redevelopment commission with Tucker Adams, and the planning commission with Tucker, and she stayed on after I left. John Merck was on the planning commission when I came on it, and continues to be on it now, several years after I have not been on it. And I'll tell you, the reason that this came up, in the first place, was that it had been brought to my attention, that there were people that believed that because the planning commission really does make an ultimate decision, even though it can be appealed to the city council, that they felt that people that were making those decisions should be residents of the city, in which they are propounding those kinds of decisions on. And that many of the commissioners certainly don't vote for us. They can't. And the citizens felt as though, you know, we've got talent within our city, we ought to probably utilize that talent, and particularly when it comes to something as important as the planning commission. So with that, we brought it forward. And the first time I brought it forward, it was defeated. And then the second time was the last time, and it may have passed three to two if the, if, if, I understand that, Councilwoman Smith. It very well could have passed three to two if Council, if Councilmember Smith and Councilwoman Clapp had voted the way that they wanted to, and then it might not be back before us. And I'm happy it's back before us, because I never felt like we had particularly input the first time it came before us, and I never, and I didn't really feel that there was a lot of input the second time before us. And I felt that we've gotten much better input this time. And it's a tough decision, it really is, because I can understand both sides of the equation. And having served on the planning commission, when such people as Marge Fay that was mentioned earlier, and David Hirschberg, and Joe McAllister, it was a different makeup altogether. And I think all, I'm not sure about Marge, but I know, I think the rest of them were within the city limits. And that didn't qualify them, that didn't qualify them to be the best planning commissioners necessarily, although they did have their best heart, you know, in it in Ojai. But having reconsidered this tonight, I personally think that we are blessed with having excellent people on the planning commission. And it's a difficult situation, because I don't, I'm not looking at it from personalities. I'm looking at it purely from the standpoint of people that have expressed a concern that their projects could be voted down by people that don't live in our valley, or that don't live in our city. And I can certainly sympathize with that. What I would really like to do is, is take the guidance that Michelle gave, and maybe, and I don't agree that this is because of a mishandled application. That's not, that's not the reason why, why this is before us. I don't think it has anything to do with the application, because certainly the planning commission had nothing to do with that. It was more a sense from the community, and I'm not just talking about a few people, that they felt that people that could deny a project really should live and be governed by, by the jurisdiction in which they're denying projects. So I think it would behoove us to take a step back, have it on a future agenda, see if, after, after tonight's discussion, and the last discussion, and then publicizing that it's going to come before us again, to see if there are other people that have other ideas about it that can give us. Because quite frankly, I'm more than willing to listen to both sides of the equation before I make my mind up. But I am swayed tonight to, to not go with what the decision was last meeting. And I would request that it be put on a future agenda, leave things as they are, and put it on an agenda to see if we get an overwhelming comment from the public, contrary to the public, to the comment that we received tonight.
Councilmember Laura?
Madam Mayor, thank you. And I definitely appreciate everybody's comments, and it's like, just echoing Councilmember Blatz. It was introduced by him first in November, in December. And, and we didn't have enough public comment, and then it was introduced again. But we've been talking about commissions for a while. And, and I think that if, if, I could see both sides of the argument, definitely. And I think that it would be in our interest as city council people to put it on the future agenda, and really ask the question to our city, our valley, and see what the opinion is, and really take an opportunity and work this issue out. And hopefully, with enough feedback, enough input, we can make an educated decision on this. Because I, what I'm troubled is, we keep getting bits of information for or against, for and against, and we both make really good arguments. So I think it would be really important for us to put it back on future agenda, and really talk about it. And I, like I said, I really like our planning commission. I really think they're, they're great. I have ultimate respect. I mean, I'm known, I grew up with Kathy Nolan's kid and kids, and they were great. And I still have a good relationship with them. So, I mean, it's nothing personal. I'm looking at it in terms of systematic. I'm not, I mean, I hear stories about Ms. Tucker and her days. I mean, I'm just, can't imagine how great that was. I don't remember any of that. I was busy playing. But I do appreciate those comments, and I think that it'd be great for us to reconsider, and to bring it up in a future agenda.
Okay, I want to make a comment, and then I'll go back to you. I have always argued, until recently, have always argued, that the ordinance as it's written serves the city best, because we are not obligated to appoint people from outside the city. I changed my decision, because the question I asked myself was, if we place this on a city ballot, would the voters vote to have all residents serve on the planning commission? I determined that the answer would be yes. And so I changed my vote. So here's where I am right now. Put it on the ballot. We're asking whether or not we want an elected mayor. Let's put it to the people, and see if they want their planning commission to be residents of the city of Ojai. That's where I am with it now.
Councilmember Clapp? You had comments? I guess not. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
First of all, we haven't done number two, which is, if, we have to reconsider, if the reconsideration motion is successful, revote on the original motion. In other words, if we don't want what is direct staff to prepare an ordinance, we have to vote on that. Okay? But after that, I would like to see, frankly, I have gotten a lot of feedback from residents. I have had a lot of feedback in working in the city and seeing the quality of what we have. And I, after that, I would make a motion that we leave the planning commission as it. I do, seeing on a ballot, et cetera, I cannot say that the citizens of this valley will be best served by that. They do not necessarily know what the planning commissioners do. If it's not a presidential election ballot, they may know what the mayor does, but I do not think, I think I was voted in for 12 years to serve the interests of the citizens of this valley. And before, and that's, so first of all, let's, let's first finish up with, we never did number two, right? Don't we have to do that tonight? If reconsideration motion is successful, revote on the original motion.
Correct. But do you have any more comments you want to make?
I think there's been plenty of discussion about this topic through, over the last year. I think it's also came before council another time, three times. Each time, it was agreed that it was best to leave it as what, as it is. When we talk of people coming before us about their concern about this group making decisions for them that don't live in the community, I know who these people are, and it's like three people. And I don't, and it's been giving us a lot of pressure, this group, for a long time. And I don't consider three people pressuring me to be the majority of the people. And I agree with Councilwoman Smith, that we have been voted in because people have the confidence that we will do what's best for the community. And when you're on council, you, you learn a lot, and pay attention to a lot of things that you wouldn't pay attention to when you're a citizen. You've given that responsibility over to your elected officials to pay attention, and to make the decisions that are best. I think it's like taking too long to pull off a Band-Aid. I think it's unfair to this, the commission, the planning commission at this point, to drag it on to another, yet another discussion. I think that wouldn't serve the community well, and I don't think it would serve the commission, nor I think it's disrespectful to the commission to drag it on. It's a Band-Aid, let's rip it off. Let's, let's get this, put this to bed. And I would like to move to, how would I put it?
Before you make a motion, is there, because I stopped Mayor Protem Smith also, is there anyone else who would like to make comments?
Well, I just, Madam Mayor, I'd like to comment that, I'm not sure who's talking to Councilwoman Clapp, but far more than three people have contacted me.
How many? Four?
Maybe 20.
Let's don't do that, please.
But, but I don't think that matters. I'm an elected official in this city that feels as though there is a broad base that deserves representation. And when that broad base comes to me with an idea, whether I necessarily agree with it or not, these are people that I served with, it'd be a very easy decision for me to say, "Let's leave it the same way." I know, I mean, I, for 10 years, I was on the, on the commission with Commissioner Merk, Chairman Merk. It would be far easier for me to do that. I just believe that there's a certain undercurrent, and it's not to take anything away from the people that are on the planning commission, particularly Commissioner Foster, who I served with. It's just that I think that we, we deserve to look at it. And I'm thankful to Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Clapp for bringing this back for reconsideration, because I think it's a good idea to reconsider it. But I think the prudent thing to do is to table it and leave it the same way it is now. If you, if you want to force the vote, by all means, force the vote. But I think by forcing the vote, we may not be coming up with the very best for our community.
When you say table it, do you mean leave the ordinance as it stands, or do you mean the vote that we took last time? You mean leave the ordinance as it stands?
Take no action on the reconsideration, and table it, but I'll...
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if I could take us back to the process. Under Roberts' rules, where you stand procedurally right now, is there's a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Blatz, seconded by the Mayor Protem, to instruct us to prepare and alter an ordinance. So that's where you are today, as if it was at that last meeting. So at this point, procedurally of a choice, the maker of the motion could withdraw the motion, and the seconder could withdraw their second. Or there could be a substitute motion to table the item. Or you, or, or you could call for the vote.
Hold up for a second, because I don't want us to get too complicated here. I think I understand where I'm going. So would the maker of the motion withdraw the motion?
I will withdraw the motion.
Does the second agree to that? That's, it's referring to the motion we made at the last meeting to...
Were you saying to leave it, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance?
No. We're, for us to set aside the motion we made last time.
Yes.
The maker of the motion has agreed to withdraw that. I'm asking if the second agrees to withdraw that. If so, then the ordinance on our books now stands.
Correct.
Okay, I am, I am, I will, I will second that the motion that's on our books right now stands.
Okay. But what we need is, as the second, are you willing to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So now where do we go?
So then the motion's withdrawn, and...
No vote?
Note and file.
It's done?
No vote.
Yeah. So you can note and file the staff report.
Okay.
But I am, I am also prepared to make a motion tonight, because I truly feel, we have brought this up three times, that our planning commissioners have, do not deserve what we're putting them through. I was really afraid that we would not have four commissioners for Wednesday night's planning commission, if in fact it came to having the meeting about AT&amp;T. That's how upset they were. And now you're, I think the suggestion of taking to a vote of the people are discussing another time is, is, is taking away energy and time that our city needs for other things. As, as, as Councilman Blatz said, our motion right now on the books, it says can be. That's all it says, can be up to three. So I would like to make a motion that basically, it stays the same, and we do not bring, we do not table that.
Okay. We don't have to. If we have withdrawn the motion, you have withdrawn a second, our ordinance is as on the books right now. We don't need a motion to do that. We're done.
But, I mean, if somebody's going to make a motion, we discuss this in another month? No? Okay, fine.
There's nothing that prohibit, would prohibit that, I don't believe. If somebody wanted to.
Now, I'm going to throw this in. If we are going to continue to go in a circle like this, I would rather see it on the ballot.
Okay, I'm done, I'm done. I'm done, you got it, Mayor, I'm done.
I think, Madam Mayor, I think Councilmember Blatz just explained it really, because I don't know, also, I've been contacted by many, many people in the community, and it's been a very mixed audience. It has not just been people that are involved in, in politics. It's been a mix. So I think it is important to discuss... So I think it is important to discuss and really get if, I know, it's not about our current commissioners. I do not want there to be a misinterpretation that we have something against our commissioners that are outside the city personally. I, I, I don't, I don't buy that argument. But I, I think that it's important as an elected official, if we're getting two sides of the story, to really listen to both of them and, and bring it, bring it back and, and let us really talk about it. I mean, it's, to me, that, it's, it's the due diligence of being elected, so.
Okay, then what I would suggest is, if there is a group of people in the City of Ojai who feel very strongly that planning commissioners should be City of Ojai residents, then I urge you to put together a petition, gather signatures, and present it to this council. Until, until then, I would like to let this rest. And we're getting, we're going to finish this agenda before we go home. We're going to recess as the city council convene as the, did I miss anything?
No.
No. We're going to recess as the city council convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. First item is consent.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Roll call? Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel? Yes. And I'd like to remind the audience, we are still in session, so please take your conversations Okay, at this time, we're going to adjourn as the Redevelopment Agency, reconvene as the Ojai City Council. Reports from council members?
I am very pleased to say that I spoke to Captain Kenny over an incident at the library earlier that was very, that was just vandalism, sheer vandalism, and he's come up with a very good plan to deal with it as quick as possible. So I'm very proud of the action of, once more, our Sheriff's Department is so on the ball.
Thank you.
Any other council members?
I just had a, I guess more of a follow-up with what our first public comment, and I don't know if there's something else that the city could do to try to prevent these actions or support the police department in any way, if there's, or, and the first public comment was about having the dogfight and worried about the merchants and, and just these, basically, he said, addicts wandering around our town. So I don't know if there's something that we could do, or if, if it has to be put on there. I know it's been with, it's been brought up before, but I mean, I don't know, I just feel like maybe, maybe you have to think outside the box to try to fix it, or I don't know if you have more information about that.
Yeah, we're acutely aware of this, this group of individuals that have been in the park. We deal with them daily. I met with the gentleman after he left, so I'm going to speak with him tomorrow, because some of the stuff he said, he, I don't think he has all the facts. So we, we do deal with the dogs. If the dogs are creating a problem, we do respond. The call he made reference today, we were on scene within maybe two minutes. We made two arrests, so we are dealing with it. You know, it's a hard, it's a hard situation, these people, we take them to jail, they're back within 24 hours. As far as getting the dogs impounded, I've been there when the dogs were impounded, they're back with their owners within a day or two. And for an officer to also wait on scene after making an arrest, to try to wait for animal control to come out and take the dog, that officer could be sitting there for two hours, waiting for animal control to show up. So we're looking at different options, and we're using the stay-away orders and different things, and I haven't heard about the problems in the arcade. This is the first I heard of it. Sergeant Arthur did a lot of work back there, so I'm not so sure that's accurate as well. But we're staying on top...
It's good to hear, it's good to hear the other side, because I feel like, okay, they're not getting a full explanation, but you just explained it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'm going to explain it to him in more detail tomorrow.
Well, that's good, thank you.
Maybe we could consider, consider a task force between animal control and the sheriff's department.
That may be an option.
I mean, maybe we can invite them up at a specific time, we could do a sting.
Yeah. We have actually done that. Could we laugh about that? But when we...
That might be productive.
When we go down into the river bottoms, we do bring animal control.
Can't you break up a dogfight with one of your canine units?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We could do that. Yeah. There's different things.
Oh, yes, that's, that's right.
Bringing a dog to a dog fight.
That was bad.
That was... No further comments.
But actually, maybe, maybe we could invite animal control up at the same, so that we have them here. Because I could be wrong, but I just don't believe our officers are prepared to capture animals.
Yeah, that's, it's really not the problem. The problem is, these, they're on a leash, and then sometimes the person passes out because they're intoxicated, and the dog runs off and does something, those type of things. They're not running loose, or it's not a situation to where we could come up with a task force and come deal with them, because when we deal with them, the dog's probably sitting there on a leash. We could check to see if it had a dog license. But our options right now are writing them a site for dog off-leash, or if you can prove the dog's been in so many attacks, then animal control can impound it. So.
Any other council comments? Fear has struck. City Clerk Beshore?
No comments.
City Manager Clark?
I just wanted to say that the stuff that Scott was talking about today is a really big deal. It's not a small deal. I've got here the list of the people or the magazines that are going to be represented on the press tour that he talked about. It's, it's 17 publications that are really frontline publications in travel and dining and leisure. And, and it's a paradigm shift for this community, and I've, I've seen this paradigm shift in other communities as well. The old Greek people, when they come and make them happy when they're here, is still a part of it. But the really big new part is getting the name of Ojai, the location of Ojai, in front of the world, and, and bringing attention to it in a regular way, and especially when you do it with articles. Ads are great, but everybody knows ads are lies. Articles, whether they're lies or not, everybody believes them. So it's important to get articles in these publications, and it's a very impressive list, very impressive list.
It is. Always, you know, in my mind, what we've missed in our tourism accommodations, we have the inn, so we have the very high end, and we have very nice motels and a few very small hotels. But we have nothing like a small, like a 200 rooms or 250-room hotel that also has accommodations for, you know, meetings and dining and stuff. We don't have anything that fits that bill in this city. I'm waiting for someone to come forward with that kind of idea, to have that, we have a lack of that hotel. And we lose a lot of business trade because, because not everybody can afford the inn.
I, I think that's true, but I also think that we have capacity for a lot more generation of revenues here through sales tax and through lodging tax. And, and the big part of it is getting the name of the city in front of the, of everybody. So people, day, day visitors, as well as overnight visitors, and midweek visitors. It's, you know, the, the Visitors Bureau's been talking a lot about midweek visitation, because they don't have that much trouble filling the weekends, but they have all these empty rooms midweek, so how do you get them? It's a challenge. The other thing I wanted to say, though, is the, the attitude of the Ojai Valley Inn is incredible. I mean, they were the ones that made the, the T-bid happen. If they didn't vote for it, it didn't happen. If they voted for it, it did happen. So that's, that's really money that they're collecting from their patrons, that they're investing in the destination, not just the inn. And they're contracting with us to have the trolley go out there, which a lot of the ridership is employees, but it's, it's an effort to bring their people into the larger community and to market themselves, not just as the Ojai Valley Inn, but as the community of Ojai. And I, I just think that Scott was kind of rushed, because there were other things that we had to talk about, but it's, it's a big deal, and, and I'm really proud of what they're doing.
Well, as far as getting people midweek, maybe they should start televising council meetings.
Oh, yeah, that would...
What would the, what would the name of the show be called?
I don't know.
That could be a real draw, having a dogfight.
Mr. Fletcher? Chief Kenny? Do we have anyone left out there?
Please.
Mr. McClure?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Meeting adjourned.
No, wait.
We don't have a closed session.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, goodness.
I'm adjourned.
We want to go before.
Okay.
Will there be a recording?
Yes.
You get the best of the town?
Oh, thank you.